Good evening and welcome to the June 3, 2024, meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely on Zoom or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body; that's the city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land-use planning projects, such as general planned updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews below-market rate or BMR housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as the recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for implementation of the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or an interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. I will now call the roll. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Here.
Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Vice Chair Eric is absent today. Commissioner Farrak.
Here.
Commissioner Cullen.
Here.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Here.
And I am Chair Schindler; I am present. We have six commissioners in chambers today, which is a quorum. The next item on our agenda is reports and announcements. Ms. Chow, do we have any staff reports or announcements for this evening?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Schindler, members of the planning commission. I'm Deanna Chow, the Community Development Director. Just a quick report out on the upcoming city council meeting, which is occurring next Tuesday, June 11. Wanted to highlight that the city council will be having an introduction to this 24-25 fiscal year budget. This will be a two-part series, one on the June 11 and the second on June 25, with hopefully adoption. If you missed the May 30 budget workshop, I would encourage folks to review the recording online, which provided an overview of each of the department's budgets, as well as an overview of the city's budgeting process. And so our budget is live, and the recording is live, and that can be found on the city's webpage. And then also, that evening on June 11, there will be a planning-related item. It's related to a project commonly known as 1005 O'Brien Drive. It is a life science building. The city council will be considering the proposed community amenity for that particular bonus-level project, which would be a payment of an aloof fee payment. So that concludes my announcements this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Appreciate that. Again, still under the agenda item of reports and announcements, I do have an announcement to share with the planning commissioners. As mentioned in our prior meeting, May was Affordable Housing Month, and there were a number of housing-themed events open to the public hosted by local housing-focused organizations. And last Friday, the 31st, I attended a session hosted by the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo that looked at a range of ways that housing element policies will be implemented in cities across the council. Excuse me. This organization has developed a web-based spreadsheet that captures components of the housing elements for cities across our county, and it is intended to be shared. I will be asking city staff to share this link to this document with planning commissioners and, as applicable, into the meeting notes so it can be available to the public, too. In past discussions about housing element issues, many commissioners have pondered how things that Menlo Park is doing relate to other cities up and down the peninsula. I think this is an excellent opportunity to gather that information and to make use of a publicly available resource. So that concludes my announcement. Please look for an email from staff with a link to that document. Are there any other reports or announcements? All right. Thank you. Then we will move into the next section of our agenda, the public comment section. A portion of our agenda: Under "public comment", the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under "public comment" for a limited three minutes. You're not required to provide your name, district, neighborhood, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under "public comment" other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when we get to that item on the agenda. So now, to learn how to participate, I'm going to turn to our clerk this evening, Mr. Pruder, to explain how you can participate, and then please, Mr. Pruder, to begin our public comment period. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Good evening, planning commissioners and members of the public. At this time, we have public comment in a general format, and if anyone would like to participate in the public comment, they may do so via Zoom by pressing the hand icon on their interface, or if you're calling by phone, you may press *9, and that will also indicate that you'd like to speak. In addition, we have in-person meeting activity, and there are members of the public at the meeting this evening. If they would like to speak, they could come over to me directly with a comment card. At this time, I have one person in the council chambers who would like to provide a public comment, so I will go ahead and introduce them. And we have no one else currently with their hands raised, but we have a person named Brian Schmidt. Please, you may go up to the podium and begin your public comment, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I won't need three minutes. Good evening, Brian Schmidt. I'm the newish director of Menlo Park. I look forward to the environmental justice discussion later. Thought I should introduce myself. I've gone to quite a few Environmental Quality Commission meetings and a few city council meetings. Haven't had a chance to talk to you all, but I wanted to say hello. You might have known my predecessor, Diane Bailey, at Menlo Park. Our organization's mission is to help the city of Menlo Park achieve its goal of climate neutrality by 2030. And we want to do this by coming up with ideas and facilitating ideas and ideally trying to have new policies that can be implemented elsewhere. The REACH codes that Menlo Park worked on was Menlo Spark priority. So I look forward to continue to working on these issues with other aspects of the city and with the planning commission, and happy to talk to anyone on those goals. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and welcome. Mr. Pruder, do we have other speakers, either virtually or here in person?
At the moment, we still have no other hands raised or members of the public here who'd like to speak that I see.
We'll give it just one more heartbeat. Any speakers?
I still see no hands raised or members who'd like to speak, so if you'd like, you can close the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruder. Yes, let's go ahead and close the public comment portion of our agenda and move into Agenda Section E, our consent calendar. Tonight, we have two items on the consent calendar. We have meeting minutes for the April 29 Planning Commission meeting and the May 6 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any clarifying questions from commissioners? Commissioner Beruzzi.
Are we going to approve these separately? Because two of us weren't on the commission for the April meeting, so we wouldn't be able to vote on that one set of minutes.
As both of them are currently on the consent calendar, we would approve those together unless there is a commissioner request to pull an item from the consent calendar and treat them independently. Commissioner Farrak.
Thank you. It's a clarifying comment that you can actually vote for the minutes even if you weren't there. It's just that some people choose not to.
Wow, eight years on the commission, and nobody ever explained that to me. Thank you, Commissioner Farrak.
Mr. Pruder, I believe, can you call for public comment, please, on the consent calendar?
Sure. Again, at this time, we have a public comment opportunity. I'm not seeing anyone with their hands raised or interested in commenting on it, but if you would like to speak, please press the hand icon on Zoom or *9 on your phone, or come by with a comment card. We can give it a moment if you'd like. I'm not seeing any interesting commenting at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruder. I think we will close public comment on the consent calendar. Do any of my fellow commissioners wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay. Not seeing any hands. Then we can move on to a motion. Commissioner Farrak.
I'd like to move to approve the consent calendar.
We have a first from Commissioner Farrak.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Silverstein. Let's go ahead and vote on approving both the consent calendar, leaving both elements in it. Commissioner Beruzzi. Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Commissioner Cullen.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so that is six yeses, no nos, and one absent commissioner. So the consent calendar passes. Thank you. All right. This brings us to the next section of our agenda, study session. F1 is a study session in which the planning commission will receive an overview and provide feedback on the revised draft general plan, environmental justice, and safety elements. And this is not a CEQA project. So as this is a study session, there will not be a motion at the end of this component of the agenda. And Mr. Chan, I believe you are going to have a presentation or any updates to the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Just give me one moment while I pull up the presentation. Okay, great. Thank you, everyone, for joining the General Plan Environmental Justice and Safety Element Study Session of June 3. My name is Calvin Chan. I'm the senior planner within the Community Development Department. I'm joined with others on the project team, including Matt Pruder, associate planner, Tom Smith, principal planner, Deanna Chow, community development director, Asha Kohn, senior planner with M Group, Jeff Bradley, president of M Group, Kate Kennedy, as well as Violet Sayana, director of programs and executive director of Climate Resilient Communities, respectively, as well as Eric Callaway, managing director of Change Lab Solutions, and Maryam Slaman from our city attorney's office. Just to introduce us to you, as we know, we have some new commissioners on the dais. So thank you for being here. So as Chair Schindler mentioned, this evening's staff's recommendation is for the planning commission to receive an overview of the revised draft general plan environmental justice, or EJ, as well as safety elements. We will review the regulatory context just at a high level to give us a primer. We did come to a study session about a year ago, so we're just going to review some of that material again, just as a refresher, because it's been a while. We'll introduce a new concept called the Environmental Justice Element Implementation Guide, or an action guide. We'll revisit different community outreach efforts that have been completed over the last year, including our recent workshops in May 2024. And then we'll also have an opportunity to receive feedback from the planning commission, as well as the public regarding these documents. Displayed on the screen are some of the major milestones that have brought us to this point. In February of 2023, we did two different community meetings, one in English, one in Spanish. Following up that with our first study session, it was a joint study session with both the planning commission as well as the city council. And in March of this year, our housing element was certified by the state. And most recently, we've had two community workshops in the May timeframe, also one in English, one in Spanish. And that brings us here to this evening, which will have our second study session with the planning commission. Looking ahead a couple weeks, on June 18, we'll have a second study session, very similar to this one this evening, with the city council on June 18. And that will be English with Spanish translation and interpretation services as well. And looking ahead to later this year, our tentative plan is to bring forward these elements for adoption. The first section of this presentation will give a very brief background regarding the general plan. The development of our housing element update project, which encompasses updates to our housing element, preparation of the city's first environmental justice element, as well as an update of our safety element, has been a multi-year project beginning in 2021. The city council, as I mentioned, adopted the housing element in January of 2023, and most recently amended it in January of 2024. The state certified the housing element on March 20 of this year. Staff and the team are now focused on finalizing the remaining components of our housing element update project, meaning finalizing our environmental justice element as well as our update to our safety element. In total, the elements that comprise our general plan, our land use, safety, open space and conservation, noise, housing, circulation, and environmental justice. At a broad level, each element of our general plan is organized by different actions, and these actions are organized at the highest level with goals being the broad desired results, policies that are the principles or approaches to achieve the goals and really help frame decision-making, and then lastly, the programs, which are the precise steps that we can take to implement the above policies and goals. Next, we'll go into a brief overview of the environmental justice element. At the start of the project in 2021, the city council committed to developing the environmental justice element in order to advance equity, as well as to protect human health, and identified three main goals for the overall project. These three main goals guided the entire housing element update project, and they were balanced community, affordability-focused, and social justice. The purpose of the environmental justice element is to identify and also to address current and potential future public health risks and environmental justice concerns, as well as to generally foster the well-being of Menlo Park residents living in underserved communities. Environmental justice means that everyone should have equal protection and advantages when it comes to the environment around them, and also that means that people should have an opportunity to be meaningfully involved in the decisions that affect their community and their life. In Menlo Park, as is seen in many other areas throughout California and beyond, areas with higher concentrations of low-income households are generally more likely to be exposed to pollution, environmental hazards, and consequently, individuals in these areas experience higher rates of poorer health outcomes. In accordance with the California Office of Planning and Research, or OPR, the city followed the different OPR guidelines to prepare environmental justice elements, which recommended a thorough screening analysis coupled with a very comprehensive community outreach. Through this process, the city identified two underserved communities. These are namely the Bell Haven and the Bayfront neighborhoods, as you see on your screen and outlined in the magenta color. This area is generally the portion of Menlo Park, which is located north of the US 101 and within City Council District Number 1. Bell Haven and the Bayfront both experience a combination of economic, health, as well as environmental burdens. There are disproportionately more Hispanic and Black in makeup than the rest of the community, and are also made up of households that have been historically underrepresented in the planning process, as well as civic processes generally throughout Menlo Park. To address and better these disproportionate health risks that exist in the Bell Haven and Bayfront area, there are seven goals of our environmental justice element displayed on the screen, and these seven goals align directly with the state-required topic areas for preparation of an environmental justice element. Next, we'll provide a brief overview of the safety element. The purpose of the safety element is to identify how to reduce potential risks of injury, property damage, as well as economic and social disruptions that could happen from natural and human-made hazards. The city council adopted the safety element in 2013, and since then, a number of laws have been enacted that require safety elements to address climate change adaptation and resiliency, wildfire hazards and risk, as well as to identify residential developments that lack two or more emergency evacuation routes. The safety element includes one overarching goal, which is to assure a safe community with the primary topic areas of general safety, geologic and seismic safety, and public safety and emergency response as the under-umbrella themes to cover. The safety element is consistent with other related documents at both the city level and county level. The next part of our presentation will speed through and give a high-level summary of what's happened between our last study session in June of 2023, bringing us up to today. So at the June 2020-23 study session, which was a joint planning commission as well as city council study session, staff provided an overview of the elements, as well as the regulatory context that guides them, and also presented a refinement framework to help make the feedback actionable. The purpose of our second study session here today on June 3 and June 18 with the city council is to present the revised draft, EJ, as well as the safety elements, and to also describe the community input that has been received. We seek your feedback that the revised elements are reflective of the prior feedback. After the study sessions, the project team will have an opportunity to make additional refinements as needed before returning for the adoption hearings, tentatively scheduled in the fall timeframe. So the next section of our presentation goes through the different components of the revised draft environmental justice element framed amongst five different themes that came out from our last study session. And these five themes were to modify certain statements about the environmental justice context, to make adjustments to the refinement framework matrix, to continue to perform a robust outreach and collaboration as part of the process, and to also think critically about funding needs and sources. And last but not least, to consider actions with short-term results that could really demonstrate progress to residents during the finalization of this element preparation, and also to take opportunities to share our successes with the community. So I'll run through what has happened in the last year under these five themes. So within the environmental justice element, this is a reminder that the underserved communities term would be our Menlo Park preferred term, and this is intended to be synonymous with disadvantaged communities, which is the state-defined term. The second part or theme is to make adjustments to our refinement framework matrix, which is Matrix for short. This matrix was a tool for the development of environmental justice element and can be thought of as a way to inform our decisions about how to prioritize time, money, resources, and then also help define realistic and achievable timeframes for implementation. The information in this matrix informed the revised draft environmental justice element that you have before you today. Following the June 2023 study session, the framework of the matrix was adjusted in accordance to planning commission and city council guidance, and then the matrix was then populated with a number of different draft environmental justice element goals, policies, and programs that stemmed from a very extensive prior outreach process. And then the matrix was further refined after that. At the beginning of our process for this matrix, we had over 100 different programs just as part of this matrix. The matrix that you see today is already the streamlined-down version. The complete matrix is presented in Table EJ-8 of your draft environmental justice element. The project team did receive a lot of different input from different city departments to help show how policies and programs are already intersecting with the city's work. In addition, climate resilient communities help direct community members to help enhance the draft policies and programs to further refine it with a community lens. The focus of the community-desired programs was refined so that they have a similar aperture with larger, broader statements and more narrowly-focused items being separated and organized a little bit better. The revised environmental justice element presents an updated organization and refinement of the different goals, policies, programs, as well as action items in two documents, the environmental justice element itself, as well as a separate and complementary implementation guide, which we'll discuss in just a few more slides. So next, I'd like to turn it over to our colleague Kate Kennedy with Climate Resilient Communities to help discuss some of the community outreach that has taken place recently.
Thank you, Calvin. Hello, commissioners and Chair Schindler. My name is Kate Kennedy. I'm the director of programs with Climate Resilient Communities. I'm also joined today by my executive director, Violet Sayana. After the hiatus to focus on the housing element, we reinitiated engagement with Bell Haven residents on the environmental justice and safety element updates. This included outreach and tabling at the Love Our Earth Festival, which was in East Palo Alto Bloom House this year, organized around Earth Day. We reconvened our climate change community team in Bell Haven, which has been meeting monthly since this project began back in 2022, in March of 2022. We held two workshops, one in Spanish, which was attended by 33 folks, and one that was in English, which was attended by 48. Both were hosted at Church of God in Bell Haven, right next to Mount Olive. And then there was also outreach and engagement done at the Housing Resource Fair on May 11. So total to date, there's been more than 1,800 people that have participated in this process at one point or another, and that includes, you know, the eight workshops that we've done in Bell Haven with residents directly, more than 420 people who participated in a survey of the community, and the Bell Haven Climate Change Community Team, which has taken on a life of its own, is executing projects that the team and residents direct, and has been meeting monthly for more than two years now. We also conducted outreach via email, flyers, social media, as well as CRC's newsletter and various listservs and networks across our partner organizations. So the meetings that were conducted in early May were really geared toward prioritization explicitly. There, like Calvin mentioned, there were more than 100 programs, policies. It was, I think if you include the policies, it was closer to 130 that came out of the really robust community engagement that we conducted through 2022 and 2023. And so we recognized that city council and staff have, you know, limited bandwidth. They can only do so much, and so it was really important to talk with the community about what things were really pressing, what things could wait a little longer, and come to a consensus as a community about, you know, just what has to happen now. So the way that that was conducted is we had a group kind of ranking exercise. We had a worksheet that everyone worked through, and we convened in small groups. So the 33 folks in the Spanish group and the 48 in the English workshop were separated into groups of five to eight, and we worked through the workshop together with facilitators, all from CRC, that were capturing the discussion on large note cards and also helping answer questions and capturing a lot of the qualitative kind of information that was going to go along with the ranking of... that was going to go along with the ranking of priorities that was being performed by each resident individually. I want to read just a couple of quotes, and these are included in the outreach summary. But if you haven't got to it yet, I think these are really illustrative of the kind of conversations that were happening as as a community and in those small group discussions. One resident said, "Living here is expensive, and many times we have to pay rent no matter what, and our health is affected because we can't afford quality food." Another resident said, "As I age, after I retired, I'm unable to afford to live." Another resident said, "There are a lot of residents that have had to move away because of rent hikes and discriminatory housebuying practices." And one more said, "Environmental justice is essential for the growth of our community." And so I think that really clearly illustrates the top three priorities that were ultimately synthesized through these two workshops and all of the outreach that has come before. And those three are providing safe, sanitary, and stable homes, reducing pollution exposure, and improving air quality, and promoting access to high-quality and affordable food. And if you look at in in attachment L, there's some more context. That's the outreach summary that CRC submitted. If you look at the average ranking position, so on a one-to-seven scale of people looking at those seven different program areas or seven different goal areas of the environmental justice element, what was the the average rank among folks? Housing was the number one response with an average ranking around 2.8. Access to high-quality and affordable food was second, around 2.9. And then reducing pollution exposure was ranked on average around 3.5. And if you look at the number of people assigning a number one rank to a particular priority, those top three emerge, again with housing being clearly the number one priority, followed by the reducing of pollution exposure, followed then by access to high-quality and affordable food. So again, that raw data is also included as an attachment to the outreach summary. If you want to look at the ranking responses, also, all of the comments that were provided by folks have been either translated or transcribed and listed in that document. I also have all of those worksheets in my backpack that I brought, and they weigh about 60 pounds, so you can look at the physical copies if you want. But those were the three kind of clear priorities that emerged from from the process. Next slide, please. So the the key takeaways that I would like to elucidate again is first and foremost, the top priority being very clearly safe, sanitary, and stable homes, and access to healthy and affordable food, and reducing pollution in the community. I think another thing that was really stark, and I think emphasized the importance of this work in particular, was just the disparities between the southern part of Menlo Park and the side north of the 101. If you go back to the survey work that we did in collaboration with Stanford, all the way back at the beginning of the process in 2022 over the summer, they, I just want to bring up just a couple of statistics from that process that I think are still really important to to bring forward throughout this, and that's for folks we asked, are are you able to afford a $400 expense? Those in Menlo Park, 98% said that they could. Only 65% in Bell Haven said they could. So that's 35% of people said they were unable to afford a $400 emergency expense in Bell Haven. In Menlo Park on the north side, 73% of residents reported that they were able to easily cover the cost of housing. That number in Bell Haven is 32%. So only 32% of residents said that they could easily cover the cost of housing. Another important point that emerged in those discussions and the the small group discussions that we were having is there were residents who attended the workshop who had difficulty reading and needed a lot of facilitation to help provide their input and their feedback in the process. And I think that some people's perception of of Menlo Park is that those folks don't exist. And I think that their participation in this process should be taken really seriously because those are the folks that are usually prevented from being able to participate in these activities, prevented from having their voices heard in the civic context. And it's really important that when we design policies, we do it with those folks in mind. So the final point, the final key takeaway is accountability. There's a lot of distrust among residents, folks that have, you know, it was throughout the entire process, folks said that they were not holding their breath when it came to to changes for their community, that they had tried, that they'd spent oftentimes 20, 30 years, it felt like shouting into a void, and received nothing in in return for that work, and were very distrustful of the process, didn't hold out hope. And I think that emerged very clearly again in the priorities of residents. If you look at the kind of final outcomes, civic engagement was very consistently ranked the lowest priority, which is really sad to see, but when I was talking about that with the small group that I was facilitating, that came up, and I asked, you know, why, why are you placing civic engagement so low? And folks said that, well, they're going to do what they were going to do anyway. Like, our input doesn't matter. They'll go ahead without us. It's always been that way. Like, I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're doing this, but I'm not, you know, holding my breath. So I think that, again, this is a process. The environmental justice element is one that doesn't carry the same kind of teeth from HCD, for example, that the housing element does. If we want this to be really effective, we have to build in those accountability guardrails for ourselves, and it has to be really the initiative of the planning commission, city council, to really drive forward the programs into implementation. Like, folks said at the beginning, this is an implementing body, and this is the right folks to be taking this seriously. So, next stage. I'd, I also included four recommendations, and the the last one is a two-parter, so maybe you could call that five. But the first recommendation that emerged from these discussions was increasing the opportunities for accountability through strict reporting requirements on EJ element programs and policies. I think coupled with that is recommendation three, which is strengthening program and policy language throughout the EJ element. For example, there are a lot of instances of should or could, and to get the accountability that residents were asking for end-to-end in the process, that language really needs to be strengthened in every place possible to move further along the spectrum towards wills and shells and musts. Because that sort of soft language, I think, is very clearly seen by residents as, you know, ambiguous, and again, kind of hearkens back to those same same feelings that they've had of being excluded from the process or not being taken seriously. One other modification was making sure that throughout the document, we're in sure, we're talking about the the goal related to housing as ensuring safe, sanitary, and stable housing, as having a stable home is vital to it being both safe and sanitary, and also vital to all the understandings of environmental justice. Again, if you're displaced from your home, environmentally speaking, you're not often displaced to somewhere better. And your home is your first line of defense to pollution, to the environmental hazards that are escalating with climate change, and is a major determinant of your health. So that's a really important point throughout this process. And then the final recommendation was elevate the anti-displacement actions into, some of them into the environmental justice element, and accelerate timelines for creating and implementing interim steps as soon as possible. So specifically, that looks like revising action item 7.J.3. So it was previously in the implementation guide. I think that should be moved back into the environmental justice element, the specific program under Goal Five in regards to a, creating a a right and program for legal counsel for tenants facing eviction. I think that's something that San Francisco has recently been talking a lot about. They implemented that program three or four years ago and have had a lot of success, and has really proven the, you know, an ounce of provision is, prevention is worth a pound of cure, where they had some statistics from their legal partner, who found that it cost them roughly $5,000 to defend someone from an eviction, but to house someone in a shelter for a year is $75,000 of expense on average. So there's a very good cost-benefit analysis for keeping people in their homes whenever possible, and this is a very clear, actionable, and tangible way to make that a reality. Next slide. And then the other recommendation, again, because so much of the conversation centered around the need to prevent displacement in the community, was ensuring that the city's anti-displacement strategy supports households and neighborhoods and underserved communities. And this includes studying at a minimum the following, all of those policies that are listed there. So if you look at the housing element, for example, the language on this currently says could include, and this list here is far more specific. It establishes a minimum standard. And I think the really important point of demarcation here is that the the language around housing and the environmental justice element can be more prescriptive than it is in the housing element, but not less. So we can be more specific here. We can talk specifically about the communities that we need to prioritize for this type of work. We can talk about, you know, just the layer of of specific language, and and we have the opportunity in the environmental justice element to take the policies that are in the housing element a step further in terms of specificity and actionability. So that ends my part. I'd like to hand it back to Calvin. Thank you all. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kate. So the next theme of feedback from our June 2023 study session was to think critically about funding needs and sources. Both table EJ eight, as well as the implementation guide in your draft EJ element, include a list of potential funding sources. In addition, staff added columns to additionally identify infrastructure enhancements, specific sites, as well as whether or not something could potentially be eligible for funding through the city's community amenities fund. The last theme from our last year's study session included considering actions with short-term results to demonstrate and communicate progress. Both the table EJ eight, as well as the implementation guide, include a list of different ongoing activities, and some of the more highlighted ones include our anti-displacement strategy, as well as the urban forest equity, developing the management plan for Menlo Park, which is ensure our urban forest management plan, as well as civic and community engagement. And these different activities were especially highlighted at our recent May two and May nine community workshops. Accountability, as Kate mentioned, continues to be a recurring theme of our community feedback, and our implementation guide or action guide is a tool to really help us improve that accountability as well as communication. So next, we'll talk about this implementation guide and or action guide. The implementation guide is a separate and complimentary document that adheres very closely to our environmental justice goals, policies, and programs, as well as the different guiding principles of our general plan, but it lies outside of our general plan itself. The implementation guide includes action items that will be pursued by the city to improve environmental justice. This dual-document approach allows us to more frequently update the guide to respond to different changes or evolution in community needs, funding opportunities, as well as to further strengthen it with ongoing community outreach, particularly from Menlo Park's underserved communities. Following adoption, the intent is to have the implementation guide or action guide maintained on the city's website to help improve that accountability, as well as using it as a communication tool for accountability. The implementation guide will also help us ease our reporting, as well as the tracking of different actions as we continue to fulfill EJ element programs and be able to adapt to different new information, but always grounding it in community input. Showed on this slide is the organization chart of the dual-document approach. In our EJ element, we have goals, policies, and programs, which we described at the beginning of this presentation. And then in the implementation guide, we have action items, which are more specific programs. You can think of it in that regard. Each action item is organized under an environmental justice element program, and it's intended to provide additional details, as well as the community-based feedback to city staff on different methods that could help fulfill the EJ programs. The green columns are to remain. The gray columns are to be removed. So here, just showing an example, walking through this dual-document approach. Here we have in our table EJ eight of our of our EJ element, Program 7A, which talks about promoting and evaluating capacity-building efforts. So along with this Program 7A, we have corresponding action items shown on the screen, 7A dot 1234. This is that text here. So you have your Program 7A, and then you have your corresponding action item, 7A 1234. Ultimately, our implementation guide, similar to our EJ element, will have a reformatted template that looks very similar to what you see on the screen. And this is drawn from our housing element, which we found to be a very succinct way to present information. And lastly, we'll talk about our revised draft safety element in this next section. The safety element was revised with different policies and programs to include the different community feedback that we received last last study session, in particular for Policy S135 regarding disaster preparedness planning. We included efforts for multilingual and multimodal outreach in underserved communities. Policy S136 regarding community preparedness has been revised to support county-wide preparedness, including response and protection services. And we've also added a new program, S1M, regarding sea level rise planning. And this is Menlo Park's requirement to collaborate with other agencies to develop a sea level rise plan as part of a subregional San Francisco Bay shoreline resiliency plan. As we near the end of staff's presentation, just to recap, we have reviewed the environmental justice and safety elements, as well as their regulatory context. We've introduced the environmental justice element implementation guide or action guide. We've also revisited community outreach that has been completed, including our recent workshops. And the next section of tonight's meeting will be an opportunity for us to receive feedback from the planning commission, as well as the general public. Displayed on the on the screen are several prompts, very similar to the ones you see in your staff report. And these are suggested prompts to help discussion this evening. These prompts and questions are, did the project team adequately respond to the June 2023 study session with the revised drafts that you have before you? Are the project team's staff recommendation columns appropriate? And this would be in the EJ element and table EJ eight, as well as the implementation guide at that appendix document. And lastly, does climate resilient communities recommendations require further refinement? And please note that staff may make additional refinements to these documents for consistency, clarity, and other means following this meeting. Looking ahead, as I mentioned, we have our city council study session about two weeks from now, on June 18th. The date and time are still to be determined. So for folks here in council chambers, as well as online, please make sure to tune into our project website, which is our project website, which is menlopark.gov/housingelement for the latest available updates. Following the study session, the project team will revise the environmental justice, as well as the safety elements. And then looking ahead, we'll have adoption hearings with the planning commission, making a recommendation to the city council, and the city council ultimately acting on that recommendation in the fall timeframe of this year. So that concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for your feedback and questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, very much, Mr. Chan, Mr. Kennedy. Appreciate all of that detail. We are going to proceed by doing clarifying questions from commissioners, after which we will do, take public comment on the, the content tonight, and then we will move back into commission discussion. I'm actually going to just take the lead here on a couple of clarifying questions. One is just purely administrative. I have a couple about the matrix in the environmental justice and one on the prioritization workshops, and then one on the implementation guide. So I'll try and get through them fairly quickly. From a purely administrative clarifying question, will tonight's discussion be given the lengthier treatment in terms of meeting notes? We'd previously discussed that there are sort of two versions of meeting notes that can be captured during a planning commission and that in instances, which I think, for which I think this qualifies, we do the more granular version so that staff gets as, as minute feedback as possible. Could you just confirm that we'll get the, the deep, the deep dive version of the meeting minutes?
Yeah, so it is staff's intent to capture your feedback as detailed as we can and to present it as part of the city council's packet for June 18th.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Move on to ones that are a little bit harder. So I have a clarifying question in the matrix of programs and policies. Five G is the one program that doesn't look like it explicitly says in the staff recommendation column, keep it or remove it. Based on the language, the additional comment, I'm assuming the, the, excuse me, the recommendation is to remove it, but I wanted to confirm that.
Thank you for the question, Chair Schindler. One moment while I move back our slides a bit. Okay, so five G, as you noted, this is part of Mr. Kennedy's presentation. So the recommendation from CRC as well as part of being the part of the project team is to modify this program as you see displayed on your screen. Shown with the orange asterisk marks, those are just to note that similar language is already included in our housing element. So the draft EJ element that you have before you doesn't currently have this language, but moving forward with tonight's feedback, as well as the benefit of the city council's feedback, then we will make all these changes at once.
So the language will be, will be reflected in five G?
That is, that is our intent, and we seek your guidance.
Okay. Thank, thank you for clarifying. I, I was under the impression, based on some other references in here, that we were simply saying this type, this content currently already lives in, excuse me, the housing element, therefore that we don't need to put it in, in this, in this element. We don't need to put it in environmental justice element. Okay. for the list of, of programs and policies, could you give some further context as to how a list, this list becomes part of the city's planning processes? For example, the capital, you know, capital plans, the budget plans, staff and resource allocations. How do these fold into other planning processes?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. That is a very good question and something that we are still having conversations about. I know that came up as part of some of the conversations around the capital improvement plan, conversations with the city council, our upcoming budget conversations. It's been coming up. And so there, there's probably a couple of different avenues. If they are infrastructure projects, they could be particularly considered as part of the CIP planning program. They could potentially be a, a separate planning process, depending upon how we get guidance from the city council on, on funding. Some of this, I know we've sort of, at least for like things that overlap with like the housing element, like the anti-displacement strategy, we've included that in some of our operating budget in, in terms of like working with contract services to prepare an anti-displacement strategy. So it could potentially come in different forms. So we're still working out through some of those details, but it's certainly important as part of the conversation, as Mr. Chan mentioned in the presentation, funding and, you know, implementation are key to ensuring this, our, our environmental justice element is a success and, and something that the community can see us making progress on.
Thank you for clarifying. I take away from that, the, that it will go into many different city planning processes, potentially all of the sort of main significant ones. Thank you. Follow-up question, I believe this is for staff rather than for, for Mr. Kennedy, related to the climate resilient communities summary. The four buckets of recommendations that we are in the staff report and that Mr. Kennedy walked through tonight, have those already been evaluated and incorporated into the, the element and implementation guide? Or is that work yet to be started? I know the timeframes are close, and it was also a little hard for me to tell. So I'm wondering if that integration has happened.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Okay, so I believe these are the four recommendations that you're referring to. So these recommendations have not yet been incorporated. This is feedback that was collected from our May workshops just a few weeks ago. So with the next draft that you'll see in the fall timeframe, that'll be an opportunity for us to incorporate these recommendations that CRC gathered as part of our project team, along with other feedback.
Thank you. And when the environmental justice element is completed, will the summary that we have a copy of and, and that was just referenced here be incorporated as part of it? So right now, for example, there is an appendix EJC that's the outreach report for the, it's a summary of the outreach for safety and the environmental justice elements. Will the summary of the excellent work done in May at the two, the, the two different sessions be also be incorporated as an appendix or potentially an expansion of the existing appendix?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. We haven't thought that far yet in terms of the ultimate appendix documents, but certainly this is part of our record. It's already living online as part of our commission packet. And I, I don't see an issue with that. It is a great resource and capture of community feedback.
Okay, thank you. Two more clarifying questions. The implementation guide will be an appendix according to, to the environmental justice element, according to the staff report. It also says it's going to be maintained on the city website, where it says, I believe the content may change. Could you just clarify what the difference will be between the content that's captured in the element, in the environmental justice element, and what's dynamic on the city's
Thank you, Chair Schindler. So yes, the implementation guide, as, as you have it right now, it's included as an appendix document to your environmental justice element. And this was, this action was directly in response to feedback that the project team received from the climate change community team that CRC managed. So there was strong desire for all the community feedback to be represented and captured, kind of like a point in time reference within our preparation of the city's first EJ element. So that's why it's in here currently as a point in time reference. Looking ahead, we really view the implementation guide or this action guide as a living document that can dynamically respond to the different funding opportunities, outreach, as well as needs. So over time, the idea is that it will, it will evolve based on community needs, but always staying very true to the community lens of the highest priorities to really benefit underserved communities.
So to be sure that I'm understanding, the content that will live on the city website as an evolving version of the implementation guide will be the most times timely and accurate, for lack of a better word, representation of requests that are coming in from the community?
That's true. And just one clarification, it's not something that staff will be like just changing on the fly. There will be like a public process for review. It's really intended right now as like a point in time capture of all the feedback that has been suggested and provided thus far to get us to this moment, but as we need to make revisions in the future, there'll be a process for that. There will be opportunities for people to be involved.
Thank you for clarifying that. And this is my final one, specifically still about the implementation guide. In the presentation, this, the presentation, the action items were described as things that will be pursued. And I wanted to just seek clarification about whether these are things that like we're certain will end up being executed and, and complete and, and acted upon and completed, or whether these are things that will be considered in the planning processes and subject to review in terms of budget and resources and so on. When I read through the document, I assumed it was the latter, because there are a number of things that are not marked as underway or short term, they're marked as longer term. So I just wanted to be certain whether these are commitments to implement or being documented so that they may be considered for implementation.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. And I think this ties with your former question that Director Chow mentioned. So it's a tool that we can use to continually evaluate what we're able to do. We want to do everything, but we understand that we're not able to. So with the prioritization, as well as the community outreach, we've been fortunate to receive such clear feedback. For example, that Mr. Kennedy alluded to like the top three different goals of EJ element. So we can look at the different programs, as well as the action items with that lens in mind, to really focus on what we can achieve first.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. So when I speak about this later, I will probably be talking about these as, as I'd action items that could become part of the city's dirt and action plans. And so thank you for humoring my questions. I will, I see Commissioner Bruzzi raise her hand with some clarifying questions.
Thank you. This is also a processy sort of question, but I'm looking at this and it's not the first master plan I've seen, but it's one of the more complicated ones from an implementation standpoint, because it straddles a bunch of different city functions. It's not like the transportation master plan, or even the housing element seems a little more straightforward, to be honest. So I'm wondering, who owns this? So who's the quarterback in the city for this plan? The person who's going to be looking at this and knowing every year during planning processes and when we're updating CIP and all those, when we're doing the budgeting, who's the person who's kind of carrying forward these hypothetical goals and ideas and making sure they happen?
So I think if, as you look at in the matrix, as well as the implementation guide, there's a column for responsible parties, as well as supporting actors. So it's really a combination of effort of everyone to create this EJ element. It's not just, it could, it could just be one and one element, but it can also have different environmental justice themes, like spread throughout every single element. So it's really a holistic approach to that. It's not one particular person.
So do those all get worked into your internal plans for the year? I mean, I guess I'm, what I'm hoping is that all this work doesn't get, you know, forgotten about, because there are also, I'm assuming, sort of superseding departmental level plans that are not sort of these hybrid things. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Bruzzi. And I think just to echo off Mr. Chan, so yes, it is, and what you have stated, it is a multi-department, multifaceted effort. There's a lot of crossover in existing docu, or existing work plans and programs that a number of different departments already pursue. And I think we've mentioned that earlier in the presentation about like, let's highlight our successes. I think someone told us earlier, you know, like we do a lot of these things, but we just may not be able, we may not be do our best sort of PR, like we may not be explaining that some of these things are, are done. And so, yeah, who is sort of the central person that's overseeing this all? And, and it's again, not exactly one person, but living that as a, an element in the general plan, the community development department would be sort of the quarterback, if you will, and help facilitate the, the collaboration between the different departments.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yeah, I had a follow-up question on, in the environmental justice report, when thinking about pollution levels, there are a number of different scores that we give to any given pollution or any given pollution source or pollutant. And those scores are based off of the relative index that any given census tract has compared to the rest of California, as I understand that. I don't, I didn't see in the report, the relative impact that each of those pollutants have on actual safety itself. And it seems like we are averaging them and treating them the same, but I might be missing something. So I just wanted to see, like, is there a way for me to understand whether or not pollution coming from PM 2.5 versus diesel particulate matter, versus traffic impact, versus cleanup sites, versus groundwater threats are more or less important for overall community safety? Because right now, as, as a percentile, I, I don't have a sense of whether or not any one is actually more or less impactful than the others when it comes to true health. And so if that's in the report, I would love to know that. And otherwise, if, if staff has any comments on that, that'd be great.
I don't have any immediate comments for that, but I'd like to ask my colleague Asher Cone of M Group, who helped facilitate our neighborhood profiles document, in case he has something he would like to offer for that.
Sure. Thank you, Calvin. Hi, my name's Asher Cone. I'm a senior planner at M Group. And I think in the environmental justice element, in the first appendix, EJA, I think this gets a, there's a table that gets a bit to what you're saying. Where, I can tell you it's on page 10 of that appendix, where it describes the different pollution burden indicators. So it gets into that ozone, PM 2.5, diesel particulate matter. The table itself is more of a descriptor than a, it looks like maybe you're looking for more of a comparison. And that information, we have a, a link right above that table to the Cal Environment Screen website, which goes into the really detailed methodology of where, you know, how the state collects this information and what, you know, these different indicators entail and the relative risks involved. And I think that will be able to give you a stronger sense of what you're looking for as well.
Thanks for the answer. As a quick follow-up, is there a reason why we didn't have any form of weighting when thinking about the relative ruins? I mean, I, you know, I'll see a score of children's lead risk from housing, and it could be 99%. But again, that's as a percentile, it could actually be not a risk whatsoever when it comes to day-to-day health. And so again, when I'm trying to think about what actually matters to the day-to-day safety and health impacts of, of any given citizen, I feel woefully underprepared when trying to opine or even be aware of what those issues are.
Yeah, I can certainly empathize with that. I think that my first thought when you were speaking is that I think this gets into a lot of the work that Kate and climate resilient communities worked when actually getting input from community members, you know, what are the issues that are affecting you? And it's a more qualitative way of understanding these issues. And I think it gets a lot of your point, like what, what's felt in the community and what are the issues that were most, that we're hearing more, most about what we should be responding to? But I think also in terms of that. we should be responding to. But I think also in terms of that, the specifics of what, what are the relative weights? Yeah, it's interesting, we're really trying to balance this statewide information, you know, what is the data that's recorded from the state, all the tools they have, and balancing that with the qualitative input that we're receiving from the community in our outreach.
Hi, excuse me, I'm Eric Hallway. I'm Managing Director at Change Lab Solutions. And one thing that I would say to this is, Calen Virus Screen is a really great tool that gives us a lot of information that we wouldn't have otherwise. So one of the ways I would actually look at this is to see how we have an ability to understand in a slightly more quantitative way, the compounded health risks that exist in specific neighborhoods. And so really looking more at like the health outcomes. So Calen Virus Screen also speaks to the health outcomes in addition to the risks. It's very difficult to compare one health risk to another in terms of the, these like environmental justice factors, because the, you know, the type of health outcomes that you're talking about and the type of risks you're talking about aren't all apples to apples in terms of what the outcomes are. Or, I mean, if you look at any kind of health outcome, it's like, well, is this health outcome more important than that health outcome? And the way that they're, that they're measured and reported can use different numbers. And the direct connection between this specific concentration of something, for example, in a neighborhood, and this specific rate of health outcomes in that specific neighborhood, isn't really something that is, that's really feasible from a, from an analysis perspective, in terms of the resources that you're putting into this type of document. So that's partially the purpose of that kind of data source from the state, is it allows you to make some analyses, knowing that everything that's in there, given the methodology that's been put in, is, are risks that do have negative health outcomes. And then when you look at those in combination with the percentiles that have to do with health outcomes, so like, this neighborhood also has higher rates of these health outcomes that are in Calen Virus Screen, then you can see that there's a combination of compounded health risks and compounded health outcomes and concentrations of the various socioeconomic factors that are, that are listed in the analysis. So I think that you can certainly dive deeply into and using Calen Virus Screen, looking at the methodology and trying to get a better sense of like, okay, well, this particular risk factor is something that feels particularly important to me. And I think what Asher mentioned is really spot on in terms of asking the community, okay, we have all this quantitative information, but there are limits to how much that can tell us about what's important or what the actual impacts people are feeling are. And so we use the engagement with the community to understand what their experience of those health risks are.
Thank you for the excellent answer. I have one more clarifying question. Just quickly, I, it's my understanding that the derivation of the safety element was kind of pulled from some other documents, and there was the kind of open space and conservation element from 2013. And I guess one question is, when we think about safety and having a safety element for Menlo Park, my initial thought process was that it would cover all sorts of safety factors that pertain to loss of life, crime, traffic safety, or anything there. And it seems like there are only these three elements around, you know, open space and conservation, there's noise goals, and then, I guess, natural disasters. Is there a reason why it wasn't kind of seen as this comprehensive safety element that includes all safety factors for residents? Or is it mostly just kind of a remnant of the history of where this document came from?
So I think, thank you, Commissioner Silverstein. So where the safety element update started was really starting from our last update in 2013 and really focusing on the new statutory requirements that have come online since. There is state required topics like geology and flooding, all those different kinds of things. And then on top of that, we added in new policies and programs to address the state required topics. Some of the other things, topics of interest that have come up lately in relation to safety, they're technically out of the scope of our safety element update, but we're happy to receive your feedback and consider it at a future date if there's guidance to move forward with that.
Do we have any other clarifying questions at this time? Commissioner Sillin.
Thank you. Just a very small kind of tactical question. In the environmental justice element, there's reference to Program 7K, seems to be regarding grants for home repair. But I don't see it listed in the tables. I just see it listed in the text. And I'm wondering if that's, if there's a reason for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sillin. I'm also looking at the table. I do note that it stops at 7J. So I'll need to check with my colleagues to see what happened to that particular program that you're referencing. If it was like a document error, that something got cut off, we'll make sure to fix it in the matrix.
Okay, thanks. So, sounds like you think it's a document error.
I don't recall what 7K is off the top of my head, but yes, if it's a document error and it's actually supposed to be included, we'll make sure to update the matrix accordingly.
Yeah, and the document described as a grant program that's being worked on with Habitat for Humanity, I think. Does that ring a bell?
Yes, that certainly rings a bell. I know the city is engaging with Habitat for Humanity for different housing programs right now. So please give us the opportunity to look into that, and we'll definitely fix it for the next draft.
Okay, thanks. And then in the staff presentation earlier, it mentioned that the matrix was noting where policies and programs intersect with current city work. I just want to clarify that that is in the column that talks about in progress. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Sillin.
And one last question, I think, related to some questions that the Chair and Chair Schindler and Commissioner Bruzzi were asking. I'm just curious if a member of the public was looking at this document and trying to ascertain what sort of the priorities are from this document that will be worked on. I know we have the scoring, we have the timelines listed, as well as, you know, staff comments about what's in progress. Is, yeah, would you be able to speak on like how to use those different things in the table to try to get a sense of what the top, like, let's say in the implementation plan, what will be prioritized versus not? Or like how it's going to be ranked by staff?
Yes, thank you for the question, Commissioner Sillin. So at this point, the, all the scoring and these different matrices have brought us to this point of the revised document. And then coupled on top of that with extensive community outreach that we've heard summarized by Mr. Kennedy today. I think moving ahead, we want to really focus on the top issues that are of most concern to our residents, which Mr. Kennedy said was providing safe, sanitary, and stable homes, reducing pollution exposure, and improving air quality, as well as promoting access to high-quality and affordable foods. So those are EJ element goals, five, four, and two, respectively. So in that light, I would expect that in the future that we would focus on those goals and then the corresponding policies and programs to implement those as a first measure.
Thank you. And a quick follow-up question. I know there's a plan to have an annual report that goes over, you know, progress so that the community can keep the city accountable. Could you speak to what, if you have a sense of what that's going to look like, like the format and, yeah, what, in what format it'll be delivered and where, what venue?
Thank you for the question. So I don't have any, like, particular idea of what that format would look like or the venue. We're definitely happy to receive your feedback for future consideration as well. I did mention the implementation guide or the action guide. We intend to make that available on the city's website as a transparency and accountability tool, so that folks can really see what are these items that have been suggested and then where we are in terms of status.
Great, thank you.
And if I just may add, Commissioner Sillin, so I think maybe one reference point could be the annual progress report that I know the Planning Commission reviews and the City Council also reviews. And I think, as we discussed earlier, that the format with sort of goals, policy, program, timing, funding, that model is, might be a good, our environmental justice element programs could translate well into that model in terms of reporting, and annual reporting as well. So that might be a starting point for us to consider.
Thanks. I'm not sure if you use those words, but you were referring to the housing element, annual progress report?
Yes, the housing element, APR, yes, annual progress report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no more clarifying questions from the Planning Commission, Mr. Pruder, could you please open us up for public comment, either for virtual or in-person members of the public who would like to give feedback?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. At this time, public comment has opened for this item. If members of the public would like to speak, and they are on Zoom, please press the hand icon. Or if by phone, you may press the star nine. And at this time, I have a few in-person comments, which I will be reading to invite to the podium one by one. And then following that, we have one hand raised virtually. We'll follow that after these commenters in person. So first, we have Brian Schmidt. You're welcome to go to the podium. And it's not mandatory that you provide your name and information in terms of the jurisdiction, but you're welcome to do so. I'm going to start the timer in just a moment, and then I'll let you speak. Okay, my apologies. You may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Brian Schmidt for Menlo Park. Given my organization... Anything in the environmental justice element that deals with addressing air pollution and reducing those harms to the community. In terms of specifics, we support the incorporation of, or incorporation of the prioritization workshops recommendations facilitated by climate resilient communities. And also that using the term shall rather than may or should consider, those are important elements that could be included and should be included in a general, in the general plan. This is similar to what the City Council does in their prioritization process. Using those words does impose a certain mandate on the city, and that's exactly the point. You're trying to elevate something and making it, making it at a higher priority level by using the word shall rather than a more waffling type of words. And one way maybe to do this is to do a redline version of this document. Or maybe suggest the staff pick a, pick part of it, take out some of the more waffling words, put in the shall, and then take a look at it, see if you've improved the document as a result. And then the goal of the specificity that was outlined in the staff report and discussed by Mr. Kennedy should be emphasized as a way to address the lack of confidence that people felt in the underserved communities, that their, that their issues would be addressed, be specific in response to the concerns the people raised. And that, that will help, help show that you're doing something in response to it. On financial issues, one thing that has recently come to my attention is that the change in how solar panels are financed and net energy metering, which was changed approximately a year ago, to make it less advantageous to use to put in solar panels, that old system, which was more advantageous, still exists for affordable housing. So that might be something that should be considered as part of addressing environmental justice concerns, is making it easier for people to clean up their, their energy system and make it easier for people to electrify their homes. And then finally, anything that was being recommended, especially part 5G for anti-displacement, is very important. We're finding the issues of displacement is making it harder to do electrifications and other environmental improvements, because if you improve a rental property, that's incentive to increase the rent or kick out the renters. So addressing those issues are an important part of the broader environmental concerns we're all trying to address. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much. Our next public speaker in person is Pam Jones. You're welcome to the podium at this time. We've got the three-minute counter ready, so we can start that as soon as you'd like to begin. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Pam Jones, resident of Menlo Park, Bellhaven neighborhood. And something popped in my head about displacement and data. We have a high rate of displacement in the Bellhaven neighborhood. It makes it really hard to assess the people that have been affected by all of the pollution and the other things that occurred in the community that make it unhealthy. So I think that's something to keep in mind when we think in terms of, you know, the data we want to collect, to determine whether or not one of the, one of the issues is really as important as the data shows, but not necessarily with the people that it affects. I want to acknowledge the depth and the scope of the work that the staff has done and is continuing to do to ensure that we are one city that demonstrates equity. But a reminder, we cannot undo the harm that's been done for 70 years. And it's well documented that this is a 70-year problem. So recognizing that we're going to do the best we can with it, and we have the obligation to do it. With that comment, I'd like to suggest that everywhere that it says the city should, that it, that to replace it with city will or city must, this document must be an action document. It must have tangible results, using a timeline that is easy to, to, to read. I found it very difficult to determine if the revised draft includes all of the requests that was in the document that we submitted in 2023 that should have been in the revision. And, and of course, the revision doesn't have the prioritization workshop in it. So we're, we're not getting, things are not moving together so that we can accurately understand what is going on with the, with the document. And I'd like to say I'm speaking for Pam public. I have enough education that it should have been easy for me to understand the information that was in the data. But part of it, part of it is a document. So one of the things that will be really helpful is that when you do your revisions, is to keep the same format, whatever you just, whichever one of these you've used already, keep that format so that it's easy to look from document to document, to make sure that we've included, included everything. With one of the items, the staff said they were going to do, be doing refinement. Any refinement must include CRC to make sure that the language that the community is speaking is one in which the city understands. Because if we hadn't been able to communicate all of these decades, then we probably wouldn't have some of the issues that we have now. And I don't know how I ran out of time. Anyway, thank you very much. And we've got a big, a big process here, but we're well on our way to getting it done.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Our last comment card in person here is from Jeff Schmidt. You're welcome to the podium at this time, and you have three minutes. And that'll be all the comment cards in person that we have. Thank you.
All right. Always tough to follow Pam. Commissioners and Chair Schindler, thanks for taking public comment. I wasn't planning to speak, but my name's Jeff Schmidt. I'm the Chair of the City's Environmental Quality Commission. But I'm talking today just as a resident. And I had a couple Environmental Quality Commission. But I'm talking today just as a resident, and I had a couple of observations that compelled me to come forward. One is a big shout out to CRC. It's an amazing outreach and engagement process with the city. Kudos to Violet and Cade and team, because I've seen some of that in action, and it was very thorough and an amazing process. But based on CRC's great work, I'd suggest adding another recommendation as you're thinking about this and engaging with the city council on this, that keeping in mind that how this is implemented really matters. We can't drop the ball on consistent, meaningful funding. It's something that I'd recommend we work in partnership with nonprofits on, because CRC is a good example of what can be done with that type of partnership. And that ensures that there's always going to be time and energy and funds applied with grants and other models. So please make sure we don't get enamored with the plan and the documents. I think that's something that does happen. We have a pretty good track record of creating plans, but what matters most is the money and the work as fast as possible. So I would say the other comment that I wanted to react to was city council takes guidance on the budget very directly. Two examples. One is they heard from residents about the quiet zone, and they acted and they funded it. And not to go into detail, but progress is happening there. And then I've also been lucky enough to be involved with some of the urban forestry work. And I think I've mentioned to a number of you, talking and babbling on about trees, but that was really about a partnership between residents and nonprofits and the city to move forward what was essentially a $250,000 seed investment by the city that last week turned into $3.6 million worth of grants submitted to CalFire. And fingers crossed, we win one or two or three of those. But it's a model of not being constrained by waiting to be told what happens with the budget. So pushing for that and pushing for collaboration with nonprofit nonprofits really works. Just please remember that city staff time and city funding are only constraints. They're not barriers. And sometimes I think we equate those with barriers. They're not insurmountable. There are creative ways to get the work done faster and more consistently, and we all have a role in that. So thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you for your comment.
All right. Thank you for that. The next commenter I have on my screen is virtual. We have a few here. I'm just going to. It looks like three hands are raised currently. So I'll start with the first hand. We have a person by the name of Lynn Bramlett. I'm going to allow you to speak at this time, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lynn Bramlett. I've been a long-term engaged resident, a library commissioner. I'm on the Finance and Audit Committee or Commission. And in 2020, I was asked to help to form a neighborhood-level meet your neighbors disaster preparedness organization. And I continue to do that, among other things. I've attended the CRC meetings, and I also was the one who brought the environmental justice law to key individuals' attention. So I think environmental justice is very important for the community. However, I am very concerned about the lack of the tearing off of the 2013 safety element, because these plans are interrelated, as some of the commissioners have gotten to. And they also need to be based on the science. And one very real potential threat to the good people in Bellhaven is when the Hayward Fault erupts. And the city council at the time was warned about that, along with the threat of litigation if they know about known hazards and don't do something. So, you know, displacement could happen, as could also displacements from people living in the soft story apartment buildings, which are primarily in District Three. And other parts of our town face risks too, like what happened in Maui. It's not inconceivable that it could happen here. So these plans are interrelated, and I'm concerned about not looking at them in a related way. And I and I agree with Mr. Schmidt, a lack of staff doesn't have to be a barrier to getting things done, you know, to add something related to soft stories and some other key aspects. So in 20 February 21, I spent about three weeks compiling ideas from reports from research. I sent it in. I have yet to get even acknowledgement from a staff person about that work. And I'm curious why the staff asked about responding to the June 2023 study session. I'm curious how we respond to all the feedback that we've collected. And by now, I do actually know a bit about the topic. And in fact, I normally go to the CRC meetings and the other meetings related to this, but I couldn't attend the last ones, because I was at the California Emergency Services Association Conference and at my own expense. So we have an opportunity to work together. The disaster prep is a city council goal. At the recent budget workshop, a few things were flagged related to a partnership, and that is what FEMA wants to see, a whole of community partnership at the planning stage. These various groups related to climate change, someone like myself, you know, the faith community, let's get together and, you know, start looking at where these plans intersect, where we could do more, where we're not thinking about things. And I think we could do more for the safety element. My only remaining point is the progress reports, the state actually requires them for all elements, so they only enforce the housing one. And so to the gentleman's comment, I think it was one of the commissioners, the planning could ask for updates for all the elements. So I have more to say. I'll leave it here. But I think we need to do more, and we can do more.
Thank you for your comment.
All right, our next commenter is Adina Levin. I'm going to allow you to speak at this time, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, planning commissioners and staff and consultants and CRC team, to whom a lot of gratitude is owed for all of the work that has been done over the last few years, including really tremendous feedback from members of the community who, you know, historically have not been listened to and communities that have been underrepresented and underserved. So thank you very much for bringing this forward. In the interest of implementation and action and accountability, wanted to highlight what a few have spoken about already, which is about budget and funding. So there's a quote, "Don't tell me what you value. You show me your budget, and I'm going to show you what you value." And so therefore, as the city goes into its budget, even now, before this is fully identified, I would recommend identifying annual items if they support EJ priorities in the budget, in the annual budget. If they are related to the CIP, call it out in the CIP and give the city council this year and now, and not wait to the next update or the next year, to ensure funding and staffing. Another thing that can help the city council is to call out how these items align with the existing priorities, to make sure that the resources will be given to that implementation.
Important. But so is safety is important.
And I the as to the comment about who's responsible, I think it would be helpful to identify a person to be responsible for tracking the implementation and to create a very digestible dashboard showing the progress on different actions on a year-by-year basis, so community members can see what is happening. And speaking of that, I want to call out a few more concrete items. While from the community feedback, the top items are the safe and secure housing, reduce pollution, and food. The climate resilience and keeping Bellhaven from being underwater due to climate change is important, although it is not short term. And so that, you know, should remain. In terms of how to reduce pollution, the items in the recommendations are all very local, but having Menlo Park be a more vocal stakeholder in regional public transportation will help reduce the pollution from driving. And lastly, working with the fire department on improving safety is a key element in the safety element. And thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
All right, our next commenter that I see here is Catherine Dumont. I will allow you to speak at this time, and you'll have three minutes as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Good evening. Catherine Dumont, Menlo Park resident, and a really I guess I'm not
I apologize. There was a minor error on my part.
Yeah, Catherine Dumont, Menlo Park resident. I wanted to thank the commission and staff and consultants on the great job, especially gathering the feedback from the community. And I wanted to reiterate some of the things that I've heard. I definitely support the idea of putting things that can be should be considered in the into the budget before city council for consideration sooner rather than later. And the I do find that the the appendix is very is quite cumbersome. I do also support what Pam was saying about let's Pam Jones was saying about making sure that the reporting, the tracking is understandable, legible, tied to a resource that someone could contact if they had questions. And also, there is outreach continues into the community to bring progress because of the accountability concerns that the community has. And making sure that we're reaching them where they live and that the city is is being accountable on these things. It is massive job and a lot to keep track of. And that's that's going to be the biggest challenge, I think. And then think that is if I have anything else in my notes. No, I think I think that's that's it. My my big concern is about making sure that there are there's budget, because I didn't hear anything in the budget workshop last week about any earmark funds for the EJ element policy implementation. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
All right, at this time, I do not see any new hands raised or members of the public at council chambers who'd like to speak. We could wait a little longer for a moment if you'd like.
Yep, let's just give it one or two more moments.
All right, thank you.
Any hands, Mr. Pruder?
I see no new hands raised. So if you'd like, you may close public comment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's close public comment and bring the discussion and feedback back to the commission. As I mentioned at the beginning of this section of our agenda, this is for discussion and feedback, using, for example, the questions posed in the staff report, but certainly not limited to that. There will be no motion at the end of this agenda item. Commissioner Sillen.
Could I propose or request a bathroom break, please?
Certainly. It is 8:48. Let's come back at 8:55. We will take a brief break. We will take a brief break. Thank you all. Mr. Pruder, are we back online?
Yes, we are. Thank you, Chair Schindler.
Wonderful, thank you. Then let's go back and bring discussion and recommendations and reactions back to the dais. And I'd like to start with Commissioner Beruzzi.
Now I'm on. Thanks for letting me go first. I'm going to have to exit a little bit early this evening. So I appreciate the flexibility from my colleagues here. I was not part of the planning commission when you reviewed this a year ago. And so I feel a little bit as though I'm parachuting in and have not mastered all of... You know, when I go into the matrix, I confess it's a little overwhelming. And the temptation to go deep on each of these items and be like, but wait, does that make sense? Or what about this other thing? Is great, but I haven't, I'm not there yet. So I'm hoping that by the time we vote on this later in the year, I'll have more of a sense of granularity. But I do want to emphasize that I think this came up in multiple comments or questions and a couple of public comments, that it does feel important to have a visible party who's, you know, the go-to person for this work as it goes forward, especially if we are, as I think we should, converting our language from should to must and will because we're making a promise to the community. I think that's important. From the public comments, a couple of aha moments for me were Brian Schmidt's comment about solar actually being still financially, like fiscally advantageous. And when I was reading some of the comments about things that people might prioritize, I saw air conditioning showing up as a priority over electrification. And I think this could be like an education thing too. But my understanding is that when you switch to heat pumps, for example, one big advantage is that you do get a cooling function. And that although the cost of electricity is something that people express concern about, that solar, having solar panels to defuse that cost can make that a much more compelling thing. And so I know we have gotten money through Senator Becker and there's a whole team of people working on this project. But I think maybe making those connections for people and then solving that tricky... I can't remember, there's a technical term for it that's really great. The problem where you have a landlord who has to pay the costs, but then they want to reap the benefits of making these upgrades. So figuring out how to not displace people and getting the anti-displacement policies rolling as soon as we can will be really, really good. And if we can figure out incentives for landlords so that we're not just, yeah, so that they want to do this. I think that would be important. Adia Levin made a comment that at the very end of her public comment that I wanted to pick up on quickly. And this was about, this was about the safety element and talking about emergency response. And one thing that we're seeing in other communities that I love to see happening more in Menlo Park is a growing awareness of the upstream safety of our streets and sidewalks and systems and integrating the emergency response teams in thinking about that part too, instead of just responding to problems that our broken systems have created. So, and sometimes those things are directly in conflict. So if you have really wide streets to accommodate hypothetical tons of traffic and the fire district feels good about having an extra lane because maybe they can get somewhere faster, people will drive faster and there will be more serious accidents. So I hope that when we're thinking about safety, I think I understood the staff to say that the safety element... Your lens on safety element was fairly constrained. Maybe this doesn't go in the safety element. Maybe it goes in the environmental justice element because I think it's, these things are definitely interconnected. But I would like to see us working with the fire district, as I believe they're doing in Berkeley right now, to think about safer streets in addition to streets that give the fire district access and opportunity. And I do think that especially roads like Willow Road, which has such a high quantity of accidents and which will ultimately provide people from Bell Haven access to the food that they're looking for when that grocery store, we hope, opens. I think that those are important changes to continue to make. And I know that the city staff are working on it, but I just want to elevate those. I also really appreciate Lynn Bramlett's comments about soft story buildings, which, as she mentioned, are mostly in District 3 and not in D1 where the focus of the environmental justice element is. But in the safety element, I do think that looking at the, again, the complex web of incentives, because a lot of that is naturally occurring affordable housing. And it costs a lot of money for landlords to retrofit soft story buildings and fix them. But I do think that's incumbent on us, especially as we are looking at a big earthquake in the years to come. I think I probably had other things to say, but I'm going to stop there because I'm sure my colleagues have good insights as well. Thank you for all the work. And I really do get excited to see the community outreach that CRC has done. And just, you know, reading those comments, reading all of that data was, you know, sad but uplifting at the same time, if that makes any sense. It's a lot. And I hope that as a city, we're reading and paying attention to it.
Thank you. Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Commissioner Beruzzi, I'm going to just tack on to the... Well, to everyone's comments about the community outreach that CRC did. And I even appreciate, rather mundane, but the staff report, I felt it was brief. And so when you, if a member of the public is looking at the staff report, you see that. And then I felt like the focus was also very much on that CRC report, which was excellent, starting with the kind of the umbrella, key takeaways, recommendations. And then if you wanted to read further, the transcription of all the comments. And you kind of can't help but scroll down and want to read all of those comments, the post-its. And you appreciate the diversity of comments. They're not actually always what you think they are. There are conflicts. And then you realize there really is diversity within the community. So, but kudos to CRC for listening to it all and distilling still the essential takeaways and themes to guide staff. Fantastic effort and priorities. I did have a question through the chair, and I think this would be for Mr. Kennedy. In scrolling down to the finer grain, there are the priority worksheets where attendees ranked the priorities, I believe. And that was pretty clear. They were ranking the seven priorities. And then further down, pages 50 to 56 in the staff report, I couldn't tell what they were ranking, if they were the policies within those goals. I'm sorry, I might have used the wrong word. I meant seven goals. The last page is, were they ranking the policies or programs? And the reason why I'm asking is I'm wondering, I just want to know if we are looking at the same thing that the attendees were evaluating, considering and ranking. That's really just the basis of my question, just to know that we are. And I'm sure we are, but just making sure that when we look at this, we're getting the pulse of the community. Are we looking at what they looked at on May 2nd and May 9th? And it was just kind of hard to see because in the printout, the text was cut off.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you have the worksheet itself. I have plenty of them here if you want to take a look at them. But yes, the first page is ranking all of the goals, the seven topic areas relative to one another. And then each subsequent page is looking at each of those goals and the programs within each to rank the prioritization of the programs within each of those goals. So we have a look both at, among the seven goals, what are folks' top priorities? And then within each of those goals, what are the top priorities of the relative projects and policies associated? So we have an idea of both overall what the priorities are in terms of the goal areas. And then within each of those goals, what are the specific things that attract people's attention?
Got it, thank you. So it is, so thank you for confirming. So it is the, in this table of the goals, policies and programs, the subsequent worksheets were ranking the programs within each of these goals. And I'm staff, I'm seeing Mr. Chan nodding. Okay, just want to make sure because, yeah, it doesn't show up in our display there. So thank you. I just, I just have one more comment unrelated to that to something Commissioner Beruzzi said about... She was honing in on a specific example of using the solar and the heat pumps as education, integrating that with also meeting people's need and desire for cooling and AC. And I just wanted to add to her very specific example. And this may apply to other topic areas. It's not only education, but also helping them get that assistance. I understand there is assistance to certain income levels. For, for instance, in this, I'm just going to use this example, paying electricity bills. So I just would add a third item to that is education, but also connecting them to those resources to help them meet those needs. And I'm going to pause there while I gather some of my other thoughts. Thank you.
Commissioner Farrak.
Oh, thank you. First, I just want to share that I've been part of the Menlo Spark Advisory Board for many years when it was founded and then stepped away for a short bit when I moved out of the country, but then came back. And I'm now on the advisory board again. And so just wanted to disclose that. So I'm very excited about the work. Violet serves on this advisory board with me. And just delighted with the work that the CRC put in. And I don't want to belabor that since everybody has noted how particularly excellent that work has been. My main point, just to kind of add to others, is that I do agree that when this comes to kind of finalization, there needs to be a robust number of shall statements rather than less accountable kind of terms of directional inspiration and more kind of specific, more certain action items that can, that the council will, you know, supports that will be prioritized and therefore done. It does, I'm not saying, you know, I know it's not feasible that every single recommendation can fall under that category. So my ask would be as this works through more final stages that we collectively kind of identify, what are those things within those priority goals that really are both important, impactful, but feasible to do in the short term? So thank you for the work. I think it's an important part. This environmental justice element is great to see. I think it's, you know, really, I think will make our city kind of understand how all of this is connected rather than seeing things like affordable housing project here in isolation, maybe connect it to the whole system. So that's all. I'll just leave it at that and thank you.
Can I ask another follow-up question to staff? There's been a lot of conversation around the language that we might have in these elements, specifically around the term shall or must or the city will. Does that language hold any legal bearing? Or is it just signaling to city council and any decision makers that it's really a priority we promised this time?
This is a policy document. So it's really, that's a question for city staff, you know. In general, I mean, the use of the word shall does carry a little bit more legal weight if we're looking at a legal issue. In this case, this is a policy document that would rest with staff and how they choose to interpret.
I guess what I'm asking is if we have the word, the city shall do X, and this is a, you know, signed and past policy document and the city doesn't do X, are there ramifications as a result? As opposed to using the language, the city shall consider or the city should look into?
I will confirm that. My, I know with the housing element, there are part of the, you know, the annual update and all of that. There is some accountability with that. I will look into it right now.
Okay, yeah. As a general comment, I want to echo a lot of the things that have been stated regarding kind of accountability. We in Menlo Park are excellent at writing plans. But typically, when it comes to any individual decision, it always ends up kind of reverting back to the priority of the decision makers, be it city council or the planning commission or whomever else. And I would be interested in knowing what formal teeth could be put into a policy document like this. And to whatever extent we can, I think that would be excellent. But I also just don't know if, again, this language is signaling as a priority as opposed to a formal requirement on our behalf. I don't have a lot of extra that I want to add that other commissioners haven't already said. I totally am in support of both these documents. The one comment I had that is not particularly impactful on a relative basis compared to a lot of the things we're talking about, but in the noise section of the safety element, I see that leaf blowers are specifically given an exception to our noise ordinance. And I know that, you know, for a variety of different reasons, the state and different municipalities are trying to move away from gas-powered leaf blowers. And I don't know why we would give a very explicit exception to, you know, making more noise and pollution to gas-powered leaf blowers, especially when we're talking about the impact of noise. But, yeah, that was the only kind of additional thing I wanted to cover that hasn't already been stated.
Commissioner Sellen.
Were you looking from, an answer from staff on that? Or that just?
I don't imagine that answer is coming right now. So feel free to continue.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, yeah, I want to start also by thanking staff. I also, similar to Commissioner Beruzzi, I'm jumping in as a new commissioner. So part of me, I did try to review the notes from, you know, the feedback from the previous city council and planning commission meetings as well as the community. city council and planning commission meetings, as well as the community feedback. But I may be not fully aware of certain comments made previously that I may be contradicting from previous commission members that aren't here anymore. But yeah, I'm, this is a huge set of documents that staff has worked on, and I appreciate all the work done on that, especially considering this is a new document, the environmental justice element, that we're starting from scratch. And I do really appreciate the work done by CRC and Cade in presenting the community feedback. So, Mr. Kennedy, excuse me. So thank you for that. It's, you know, I know that the state law has changed, I believe it's SB 1000 in 2016, required that we focus on which communities specifically within Menlo Park are impacted, and then addressing those communities specifically. And so clearly, getting feedback from those communities is critical. And I'm sure, you know, if you dig into the weeds, more could be done. But I feel like through the survey that was done initially with Stanford, plus this next round of feedback, it does give me a pretty good idea of, you know, what the community members from the impacted communities see as important. And just to kind of say it out loud, my understanding is the top three priorities that are important to the communities that are impacted environmentally would be housing, pollution, and access to food. And I also want to kind of acknowledge that, I think it's important to acknowledge that, you know, the environmental justice element is meant to address historical wrongs that were done at the policy level within our city, within the state, within the federal government. So, you know, the people that are being affected by the problems that we're seeing in this report, like the environmental impacts, the health impacts, you know, it's for a reason. And some of those reasons are policy reasons that were done in the past for what I think most would agree today were the wrong reasons, and they've been, like others have said, well documented. And so the people that are being affected by this, I don't think they're making an individual choice to, you know, live there versus somewhere else. It's sort of a whole set of choices done at individual levels that have resulted in different policies and circumstances that have resulted in communities that are disadvantaged. And I think it is important to address those things. As others have said, you know, we can't wave a magic wand and undo everything overnight, so we do have to have some sort of plan. I guess, maybe I'll, yeah, I think, like others, I'm, I have comments on the accountability side, but I first wanted to just hone in on a few things from each document, from the plan, to just get some, maybe clarification from staff on a couple of things, and then move on from there. So if it's okay with the chair, I would like to ask staff to comment on Program 2J6. So I saw that in the previous set of meetings with the community, that was in the notes from the previous city council planning commission study sessions, there was feedback that trees, you know, and adding more to the canopy is important. So I was kind of surprised to see that we are removing the plan to add more trees, and the reason given was that just, it's not feasible. Am I understanding that correctly? And could you comment on, if there's, if there are other plans maybe I'm not aware of, to add trees?
Through the chair, I can respond to Commissioner Sillen's question regarding EJ Element Implementation Guide, Action Item 2J6. It's on page 18 of that document. So you're correct, this original action item said, like a commitment to plant at least 75 trees suitable in different locations, and staff's recommendation was to remove, just given that we are currently undergoing our urban forest management plan, or urban forest equity project process. As another public commenter acknowledged earlier this evening, that grant was just submitted to CAL FIRE last week. So in, instead of just committing this number of 75 within the EJ element, we really wanted to take the opportunity to correlate our work with the EJ element with that urban forest master plan, management plan project. So that number is actually, it's, it's different than the 75 here. It's actually, I believe, greater, and then also talks about partnership with canopy, as well as other different areas. So it was an intent not to write something too prescriptive here that would just, since this document has been released, already been superseded by something more updated and relevant.
Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, Program 2J says, "Develop an urban forest master plan," and that is a separate document, therefore, it doesn't make sense to have a specific commitment within that plan in this document. We're going to make those commitments in this, the urban forest master plan? Is that right?
Yes, I think we're saying, I think, I understand you, and I think we're saying the same thing. So what I'm saying is that we couldn't, we didn't want to commit to exactly 75 trees because that was the number suggested through prior community feedback. We wanted to go through this urban forest management plan process, which that grant was just submitted last week, actually states an even higher number. And we worked with that team, as well as other members of city staff, to already identify locations in the Bellhaven neighborhood, and we also reviewed that with CRC. So this pro, this action item that you see, this text, was just at an earlier stage, and we've since already moved past that. That's why it's recommended for removal.
Okay, thanks. I guess follow-up question is, so then, for a community member that's listening to this meeting, should they assume that we will be planting these trees? Or is it depending on whether we get the grants from CAL FIRE, and it's possible that if the grants don't come through, or something else happens, that we'll be back to square one?
I wouldn't say that we would be back to square one, because we do have a plan in place, as well as identified need. But I also don't want to speak for the future of the grant. We have every intention, and I think, hope to receive that, and we'll move forward accordingly.
Then my next question is about Item 2I8, which is regarding access to local retail in the community. And I know that's been brought up by community members in the past. I'm wondering, it says that this was implemented by the housing element, but at least my understanding is that there wasn't something changed in the zoning that further expanded the possibility of micro, micro fulfillment and retail services within District 1. So again, in this report, or sorry, in the table, the implementation plan, it's kind of mentioned as a remove, like this is done, we don't need to have it in the plan anymore. And I'm, just want to confirm with staff that it is the case that with the housing element, we made some change to further increase access to neighborhood-serving retail?
Thank you, Commissioner Sillen, for the question. This question that you raised was actually also brought up by a separate commissioner earlier today, and I'd like to ask my colleague, Principal Planner Tom Smith, who directly managed the zoning efforts, if he can shed some light on this issue.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Happy to address that question. So as part of the zoning updates that occurred following the housing element process that were enacted in January of this year, there were some changes that occurred, and these were primarily on Willow Road. And so I think there are some nodes, if you will, at Willow and New Bridge, and then Willow and Ivy Drive, that received the new CMU, which is Neighborhood Mixed Use zoning. And as part of that, if you'll recall, there was a definite emphasis on retail, restaurants, community-serving, small-scale retail, and then the possibility for also combining that with mixed uses through multifamily housing. So there were some, some changes that took place, and we felt that those locations along Willow Road were the appropriate places to implement those zoning changes. I would also note that there's the existing C2S, which is a neighborhood shopping center zoning district at Willow and Hamilton. And so those uses, which are, you know, there's restaurants, there's a service station, uses like that also are sort of neighborhood-focused uses as well. So those, those changes did occur as part of our zoning update.
Thank you. Follow-up question, I think for Mr. Smith, would be, my recollection of what we changed in the housing element was that we are taking existing sites that are zoned for commercial or retail use, and we're allowing housing to be built as a mixed-use component. But we did not change the zoning to allow for more retail than before. Could you confirm if my understanding is correct? And then my second question is that this item mentions retail uses within one-quarter mile of all residences, and I'm just wondering if Willow Road meets that requirement?
So these sites did have a previous form of zoning that did allow mixed uses. And so it was a bit of an update, really, to those Willow Road sites. I think we sort of tried to do a little bit more streamlining of the uses, and encouraged more of that mixed-use type environment there. I would say, I don't know that those sites are particularly within one-quarter mile of all residences in Bellhaven. I think the further that you go back, sort of towards Terminal Avenue and things like that, in those areas, those may be a little bit more removed. Although I would note that our Bayfront zoning does also, so talking about office, residential mixed use, and then our Life Sciences District, those uses also do allow for incorporation of some retail or commercial uses as well. So some of these, some of these areas that are a little bit further removed from Willow Road may be able to access certain types of uses, future uses developed in those areas along, maybe closer to driving off of Chilco, if you will. But it was, it was pretty challenging, because if you look at the overall Bellhaven neighborhood, a lot of those sites are dedicated to single-family residential uses. And so it would have been challenging to rezone a single-family residential use to a mixed-use commercial site. And so we were trying to be sensitive to that as well. So there are some challenges there with the idea of putting commercial-serving, neighborhood-serving commercial uses within a quarter mile of every residence there.
Thank you. That answers my questions on the environmental justice element. And then I just had similar questions on the safety element. I'll just keep it brief by listing the things that I wasn't able to find. I was just curious if, if the chair allows, if staff could mention whether they are there, or if not, yeah, if not, my comment would just be, perhaps we could include them. So I know we got a couple of comments regarding biosafety lab requirements, and I believe the staff report mentioned that that's something that we could add to the list if desired. And I'm wondering if that's something we are, yeah, whether that is going to be added, or whether that's something that staff is looking on direction from, from the commission. And then the other things were, I know we have the ACT Menlo app, and the report mentions that we promote public safety things on there, like I was thinking about evacuation routes, and like today's notice about the fire on Middlefield. I'm just wondering how we are telling residents about the existence of that app and the notification system from the county, and how we're making sure that everyone has access to those notifications in case of an emergency? Maybe there's an opportunity to, for example, measure what percentage of residents have subscribed to it, and how we can get further adoption. Number three that I didn't see was, we've had issues with trees falling over during storms and knocking out power for long periods of time, and I'm wondering if there's a plan to mitigate that. And at least from personal experience, we've had issues with streets flooding during heavy rain due to storage drains being blocked. This might be an issue more specific to residences near the creek. But yeah, again, I'm just wondering if that's somewhere listed as a priority, and if not, whether it makes sense to add it?
Thank you, Commissioner Sillen, through the chair. So regarding biosafety levels, a program isn't in there specifically, but we seek your feedback if you would like to suggest something, and we can definitely take that back, and also report that to the city council after June 18 study session, and then go on revising from there. Regarding the ACT Menlo app, you asked about how are we telling folks, and any metrics on that? Staff can look into that. I know the app is managed by our Public Works Department. I've previously interacted with them regarding like illegal dumping, so there is option to like download those reports. I also believe that they have a dashboard online. Last I heard, maybe it was still in like a draft phase, but I think the idea is to really make it a very user-friendly tool. And together with our city's public engagement team, we can look at ways of elevating those resources. In terms of fallen trees, particularly during storms, or in like storm drains blocked, you can certainly take your feedback and look into ways, if there is a particular policy or program that you see, that you want to amend or add to, please let us know, or we can generally take your highlighted notes and look into opportunities in the future.
Thank you. Quick follow-up question on the biosafety topic. So I know we had an email public comment regarding the different, the four different levels of labs, and I'm just wondering, do we have these labs in the city today with these different safety levels? And if an application was to come in for a lab with one of these four safety levels, do we have, do they all go before some sort of body for approval, or do some of them go before a body and some of them don't? If you know the answer to that?
I think, I think I've heard that there are not any biosafety level three and above type businesses in Menlo Park, but I look to my colleagues if they are aware of some more updated information regarding that.
That is also my recollection from past conversations where this has come up.
Thank you, Chair Schindler.
Thanks. Okay, thank you for answering my question. So my feedback on, well, I guess I'll go in reverse order. So with the safety element, I do not have specific suggestions on, well, okay, streets flooding. I know I've seen some work done to protect the storm drains from being clogged, particularly around El Camino. I guess, yeah, I don't have any particular recommendations besides just adding that as an item to monitor and consider, because it's been an issue that's happened two years in a row now, where at the end of my street is flooded, and I've heard other streets flooding as well. Trees falling, just, you know, don't like to see people's power go out for days at a time during storms. So I'm not sure, you know, if there's a way to evaluate which trees are at risk, particularly trees on private property, I'm guessing, are harder to assess by the city. So yeah, just something to look into, I suppose. The ACT Menlo app, I do use it frequently. I get alerts from things around my neighborhood, and might comment on them. I've reported a few things, and one thing recently got addressed within like a month, so that was nice. So yeah, that's, sorry, that's not necessarily a public safety-related always, I know, like some things like, you know, that I see on there might not be totally related, but... some things like, you know, that I see on there might not be totally related, but it's an excellent app. It's a great way for people to feel like there is accountability from the city if they report something. The two things I would say would be, yeah, to make sure we increase adoption and to have perhaps more policies in place in terms of responding within the app. Sometimes things that are filed, I see that I follow from other people or things that I file don't get responded to for a long, long time. And sometimes the response is something like, we're looking into this, you know, case closed. I would like to see more accountability there where, you know, something you report is not closed until it's actually addressed and citizens are not told to like call another department to see what's going on. And for biosafety, I suppose if we don't have any of these high-risk, which I understand is three and above labs in the city now, I would just say perhaps we could better understand what the permitting process is for the different levels such that Plank Commission or City Council can make a decision moving forward. For the environmental justice element, I fully support the recommendations for anti-displacement. I also think, given what Mr. Smith said regarding the community-level retail, that's something I've heard mentioned a lot by community members. And it seems that we did not meet at least what's stated in the list of things here. Sorry, when I say list of things, I mean the, in the implementation plan, the list says allow neighborhoods during retail uses, et cetera, et cetera, within one quarter-mile of all residences. It seems like Mr. Smith said that that's possibly not feasible, although it seems like it's, it's just a zoning change that's a little more complicated. So I suppose what we have here in the reports, in the plan rather, is it says staff recommendation remove accomplished in early 2024, but I believe what Mr. Smith just said is that it wasn't accomplished as stated. So the comment should either be that staff is removing it because it's not possible to accomplish it, but I believe everything is possible. So it might be more of an explanation of why we don't think it can be done now so that council and Plank Commission can discuss whether that's something that's important and the community can consider as well. Other things, you know, I noticed, I saw that the community feedback mentioned a lot about accountability and feeling like things are not getting done and looking for things from the city that the community feels like is tangible and was put in place. So just looking at the priorities of the community, housing, pollution and food, I was trying to think of a few things that perhaps the city could consider focusing on as kind of things that could be delivered in a relatively short timeframe that are not just, you know, additional studies and programs, but actual things that the community might feel. So I think programs 4D and 4E regarding garden, like community gardens would be excellent ones to consider. And I know that there was some discussion of having things at farmers' markets, but perhaps we could focus on making sure there are farmers' markets in District One on a regular basis, perhaps tied in with the community gardens. Those seem like potential quick wins. Regarding the anti-displacement, since that's already being done via the housing element, I think those are excellent policies to look at. And yeah, so just zooming back out from my list of, you know, things to focus on, I think I am concerned about accountability. I heard some commenters and some commissioners talk about, you know, changing could to shall or, or using stronger language, but I also heard during the clarification questions that this list of, the implementation plan is sort of not a commitment to implement all those things. So once the implementation plan is completed with all of our feedback, then it's going to go to all the different departments and the different departments will have to consider how that fits in with their priorities. And then there's budgeting and there's staffing and all these different things. So I'm worried that if we go and change all these action items to say, we will do this, we will certainly do that, and then a large number of them get lost in this shuffle, that will further hurt our accountability. So I would propose, I guess on the, on the plan, at the, at the least, I would propose adding columns that mention whether currently there is, you know, it's in the budget and whether there's staff availability to do, to do it, just like a yes, no, so that we know what's already sort of, I guess that's a way of saying it's in progress or at least it's slotted in pretty confidently versus things that need to be discussed further, need to be determined further. And I think I'm just a little concerned about, yeah, over-promising. Like for example, the anti-displacement from the staff presentation, the list of anti-displacement programs that staff said will be added to this list is a pretty heavy list of things we're saying we will do, such as adding a rental registry and rent control. And I'm not saying I don't want those things. I'm just concerned that if we put that in the plan as things we will do and then, you know, they're big hairy things that require a lot of time and effort, that if we come back and they're not done, it's going to kind of work against us. So I guess I would just encourage staff to, I, I think the implementation plan is great because it has like step-by-step items for what's going to be done. I would just encourage staff to maybe present it in a way that makes it easy to understand the priority of things as far as like, not just the, the scoring system, but priority on the, on the staff and budget level of what can be done. And the, maybe breaking it out into like, yeah, these things will actually be done short-term versus these are things we're going to look into. One thing that would help, and I've also heard this in public comments, would be just to help even us here at the commission digest these things for large tables like the implementation plan and Table Eight in the environmental justice element. It would be great to have Excel versions of that so that we can, for those of us that are familiar with spreadsheets, can like sort and filter them. For example, this thing I'm talking about where I want to look at just the short-term things, that would be great to have it that way. Alternatively, you could just put different sorted versions in the report, but I think that would make it even harder to read. So that would be great. And I think to Mr. Jones' comment about understanding the differences between files, I know for the housing element, we had a very clear red line version that showed, here's the previous one, here are the things we changed. I think that would be very useful, given that we are incorporating community feedback and we want to show that we're doing that. And on the list of prioritization, I think it would be helpful to have, in addition to urgency, impact, effort, cost, perhaps we could add, you know, community priority or something like that based on CRC's feedback from the community so that we can understand urgency, impact, effort, cost from this, you know, staff and city level compared against what, what the community finds is important so that the community can understand, hey, this is important for us, but it's actually, you know, very expensive and takes a lot of effort versus this is important, low-expense, low effort, we're going to do, or high, low effort, we're going to do it soon. And I think those are all my comments. Thank you for letting me carry on. And yeah, thanks again for staff for putting this together.
If I may, I just wanted to jump in on the question that I said I would look into. So I just will reiterate that this is a policy document and not local law. You, local law is in the municipal code, which is established by ordinance, regulations are adopted by ordinance and resolutions. So this is a policy document. You are free to recommend, you know, staff look into certain accountability options, but it is a policy document and not local law, which is in the municipal code. So I hope that answers some of your questions. And yeah, thank you.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question on that?
Yes, Commissioner Sillin, or sorry, Silverstein.
It's very. Adjacent in the, in the alphabet. Is there, is there any difference in, from a legal perspective in changing the language of this policy document from should to shall? Or is it just a kind of recommendation for us internally? And however we read that is fine, but there's, I mean, is, is what I'm hearing correct that there's no actual difference between those two words?
That's not entirely clear. It's really up to you as the board and, and staff to recommend how you want to frame it. I would just repeat that it's a policy document.
Thank you for that clarification. I have some, some thoughts that I will use to hopefully layer constructively on top of what the other very wise commissioners have, have already said. First, I would like to just also reiterate my incredible appreciation to the out, for the outreach that's been done to the community, the work that CRC has done, the engagement with Menlo Park residents over the last three years, especially the outreach that was done to, to the underserved communities. I am in awe of the, the granularity and the frequency of the work that was done. Thank you. I've learned a lot. I'd also really like to compliment the rigor and the detail that staff has put into these two tables. There's a lot here, but I think there's even more here than we've come to appreciate because we are not the executors of this plan, these, these, excuse me, these documents. So I have, over the course of this discussion, come to realize that I, I want to think about these two tables as input documents. These are things that are going to go into budget plans, capital plans, staff allocations. And I am going to differentiate hopefully well in my comments between input plans and output. Accountability lies with both of those things. So we need to be sure that as, as a city, we're conveying to our community that we're hearing them and that we have captured what they have asked us for in the input. That is important for accountability. But I think more importantly is the accountability on the output side of things. So we have talked about sort of going back to the community and telling them which of these things are happening, when they are happening, why they are happening, probably why some things aren't happening. I was pleased to hear earlier in the conversation that we could imagine the environmental justice element or maybe the safety element having the same kind of approximately annual update that we saw a couple of weeks, I think it was weeks ago, for the housing element. In my notes here, I actually would like, I made, I wrote down, we should do that for the community, right? There should be a, and it should not just be specific to the environmental justice or, or, excuse me, safety elements or even the housing element. I'd like to see a general plan readout because as I've, I've listened to the conversation and watched the programs and the policies intersect in these documents, what I appreciate is that there's so much overlap, right? There's overlap in objectives and there's overlap in accountability. There are multiple places in here where there's overlap between environmental justice and housing. There are multiple places where there's overlap between safety and a number of other departments. So in terms of output to the community, I think it's important to go back and give those regular updates about what is being done across the entire general plan. That probably sounds like a terrible, like six-hour public meeting. That's not what I meant. There's got to be a way to sort of winnow it down to the most important things that the community cares about. And I think we've heard tonight that there's been, already been a process for identifying that. So we don't go out and say, this is the update on the environmental justice and this is the update on housing. Like these are the updates and the things you care about. The documentation that we have here already has a lot of really important information about what's most urgent or highest impact. Apologies. So we, we can't do everything that's on these lists and I'm going to come back to that theme in just a second. But there's been a, let's see, bear with me. There's been multiple mentions about getting these things actionable and funded sooner rather than later. So there's been a discussion about how this could potentially feed into the budget process. I think we already know what the three top priorities for some of our underserved communities are, goals five, four and two. And we could go in and say for five, four and two, we could pick the programs that are either urgent or high-impact and say, these are the ones we want to be sure get into the budget conversations right now. So we have that data already. I would love for somebody to sort of figure out a way to, to, to move that into the capital planning process as well as the budgetary process and potentially even short-term resource allocations. Okay. Let me sort of go back to document-by-document feedback. On the table of goals, policies and programs for the environmental justice element, I, I don't have a lot of like feed, line item-specific feedback on the policies and the programs. It's my belief that the community, community members and staff who've been heavily involved in this and taken it from the hundreds or thousands that we alluded to earlier down to the number that we have today are closest to this and therefore sort of in the best position to do it. There haven't been any programs removed since a year ago, the last time we looked at this. There have been some policies that were removed, but that's because they've been consolidated, reflecting the overlap between this element and other elements and accountability across different departments. But in light of that, I would actually wonder, question to staff, could lead departments, accountable departments also be assigned to policies? Right now, the document has primary and secondary responsibilities for programs. I think it might also be beneficial and I don't think too much of a stretch to add accountable departments to the policies. Okay, we talked about that. All right, I'll save, save the color commentary because it's, I just, there's another, I have more comments in here about how much I appreciated the feedback from the, from our, our communities about what environmental justice meant to them. Thank you. I just, I learned a lot. I will skip the, the details. In terms of the, the four recommendations that were part of the CRC feedback, I'm pleased to see that the, the part about anti-displacement stays in the environmental justice matrix. The goal about report, okay, let's just go back. And the rest of my feedback is primarily under the bucket of accountability. I don't think we should change the language for any of them to shall or will until we are like above 80% certain that we will do it. I think that, that hurts the accountability component of things. I think if we want accountability, the thing we can do is be more clearest about what we are going to do and why we are going to do it. And I'll go back to the output side of things and give people a clear vision of, this is, this is the output, this is what we are going to do. Commissioner Peruzzi, before she left, said that when we use the words shall and will, we are making a promise to the community. And I, I don't want to make promises that I can't, that we can't keep. And so I, I take that very seriously. I, I want to find a way to convey that we heard the feedback and your feedback is, is thoroughly going into all of these different city planning processes and it's being weighed against feedback that it, it's being prioritized, but then have the output be something that people can revisit regularly. Okay. And now I'm going to, okay, so here's the other, I think that's it for CRC. I may come back to, to something. As it relates to the implementation guide, I appreciate the feedback we've already been given tonight about how it might be updated, what the online version of it might look like. That plus, I don't think it should be called the implementation guide. I think it should be called something else. I don't have a better alternative, but the problem to me with an implementation guide is it's literally like, Amanda, this is what we're going to do. This is how we are going to implement the policies and the programs. And as And as it stands right now, the implementation guide only has action items identified for some of the programs. So it's not comprehensive in terms of an implementation plan. It's, I, I think there's a better label that captures the way we've described it tonight is an additional repository of specific ideas from the community, right? That are like another layer underneath some of the programs. It's not a commitment to implement. It's not exhaustive of all the things we would do to implement. So I don't have a more creative or better name for it, but I think it should be called something else. All right, I think I can almost look at, I'll leave it at that as it relates to the implementation guide. My comments on the safety element. I will make a couple of broad statements and then one specific one in response to a question that was asked previously about the biohazards. I understand that, that the, the safety element was updated sort of intentionally to respond to specific legal requirements and that we live in a world of limited resources. I, I think the safety element, when you put it next, it would have been interesting to say, what, see what happens when you, if you surveyed the community and said to the community, what are your safety needs? And what types of programs would address those, similar to the process that we went through for environmental justice? I think a number of other safety concerns have been surfaced through public feedback, through some of the other commissioners' comments. I think we didn't go through that exercise and I suspect that there is a very good reason for that, primarily around resources, and I respect that. But I still think it would be interesting to acknowledge that there are other ways we could have, we could have gone broader and we could have gone deeper and we could have gotten a more comprehensive set of community feedback on what the community perceives to be safety issues and the programs that would address them. So that's my broader statement on the safety element, on the specific question of biohazard, which has come up a number of times for the planning commission because we got this question related to new, to new, excuse me, to new development. I think my hypothesis is that the best place for this is in zoning, but I don't know the answer to that. I would like to see that it get, and I think there is a part in the safety element, S1E, S1J, and S1G, all of which could be, so zoning hazard, safety plan for mitigating hazardous material and sharing hazard data with other agencies. All of those are places where the biohazard issues could be addressed. So I would like to, at some point, see the, a program to come up with a biosafety resolution mechanism. I don't think the answer needs to be in the, the, the element, but a process for defining our city's approach should be there. And I think I will wrap up with that. I'll just skim my notes again, if any other commissioners have more questions or comments. Thank you, Commissioner Doe.
I do. Thank you, Chair Schindler, for your comments and for allowing me to speak. I just, I, we, it's been said, and Mr. Schindler, you confirmed that those four recommendations that CRC provided will be incorporated. So thank you, because that was a point of my confusion. And I just wanted to ask accordingly, you know, so Program 5G in Table EJ8 is going to be expanded to include the recommendations from CRC. And I just want to confirm a detail that correspondingly, the action items, 5G1, 2, and 3, will also then go back, because right now they're being noted as removed. So just want to be consistent with the, you know, if we're keeping and elevating the anti-displacement in the environmental justice element, that, just making sure that detail. Page 25 through 26, those, those three were noted as being, to be removed?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Doe and through the chair. So 5G1 and 2 talk about particular action items and differently examples of things that could be done as part of the studying of the anti-displacement strategy, as I understand it. So our CRC's recommendation as part of the overarching project team is that we'll modify Program 5G to include those examples, so.
So they will be removed? Okay.
Exactly. So live in one place.
Got it. Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. And then I, um, I, I do, I, I just wanted to echo the, going now to the safety element, what the chair said about it being evident that it didn't go through the same robust process. And so I, maybe this is not the appropriate time to say, but I, I did want to point to Lynn Bramlett's email that came in this afternoon. She sent a very long document that I don't know that's made it into the staff reports. I don't know, I, I believe her message though was included in the staff report from last year, it was very, might have been the same document. So I'm just, the public has access to it. But the, the safety element has one goal, assure a safe community. And I don't know if there's staff capacity to respond to some of these comments that she had, but I, I do agree with her that that is a really big goal and to break it down into the components makes a lot of sense. I just feel like it's a really, that's a really big goal, just assure a safe community. And again, I don't, I don't know if this is the right time and if staff has capacity, but currently, under that goal, the policies are grouped by the source of the threat, you know? It's from wildfires, it's from earthquakes, it's from tsunamis and floods. And I would, it would be great to see our safety element organized by proactive action, kind of almost like the way the environmental justice, you know, if you look at the seven goals, it's addressing health risk, assuring, I, I don't have it by memory, but assuring safe, sanitary, stable housing is a very proactive actions addressing these things. So I don't know if, where in the process, I'm just saying it just from how I feel like the safety element, I feel should, it would be great if it could have benefited from that same robust, like we are organizing our safety strategy by action, not by the threat from which it came. So that's, that's my comment on, on that. And now just a detailed comment going to the ACT app. I recently had an opportunity to use the ACT app for the first time. And just speaking to making it easy for people, you know, I, I went to the city's website and I, you know, entered in my comment, entered a photo, and I clicked submit. And then it took me to see Click Fix to create an account. And so I'm just thinking if there's, you know, if we're looking for removing hurdles for people to contact their city, I think that's a simple one. If you could just directly link to See Click Fix, for example. And also I didn't see any options for toggling between languages. The website does, but in this particular app, I didn't see that. So if, you know, just again, making it more accessible to all people. And I will say that once I submitted it successfully, the, the city was very prompt in responding. So if you could just get to that point where people could easily use that form of communication and it'll complement these bigger, longer term projects that the city is undertaking, that would be great. Thank you.
Commissioner Silverstein.
So I might be throwing a wrench into things and I would love to get my fellow commissioners' perspective on this. But after hearing a lot of conversation around accountability and in particular what Chair Schindler said about the impact of using the terms must and, and the excellent framework that she put together around thinking about the differences between an input plan and an output plan. It, you know, really emphasizes that this is not a document we're putting together of what will happen, similar to how the transportation master plan was not a document on what will happen despite highlighting 198 different projects, many of which were all tier one and many of which will never happen. And even if they want to, they need to hire consultants and figure it out and take another three years. And, and I read a description of what a city's general plan should be, and, and it reads, the general plan is a policy document that establishes a citywide vision and consistent direction for future development. It reflects, reflects community priorities, values, and includes supporting goals, policies, and implementation measures to achieve the community's vision. So my question here is, why do these very specific nuanced programs need to be formally attached to the element that we're putting into our city's constitution? I'm, I love all of our policies and goals and the background and surveys and fact finding and again, our, our priorities and our vision and what we care about, but can't that be extracted away from, okay, as a result of all of those, and as a result of all of the information we've now gathered, these are the very, very nuanced, specific things we're going to do and this is what it's going to cost and this is who's going to work on it? Those to me seem to be very detailed, kind of implementation stage of this process that seems out of place in a policy document, especially one that usually lives on for decades. I mean, the last time, a lot of, you know, we, we did this 10 years ago and, and the same can be said for a lot of our other elements. And so I, I guess this is half a question for staff on the, the legal aspect here and then another half question for the opinion of anyone else up here on the dais on, you know, does it make sense to tie these two together? Or should we have a environmental justice element that talks about all of the things we care about? And then based on budgeting, based on prioritization, based on our execution plan, we can think about what are the actual details of, of the things that we want to accomplish and then promise those and we can use the term must. And, and I don't know, it seems like we're, we're trying to kill two birds with one stone here to potentially a detriment of that, that execution part. And if people disagree with me, please say that. No hard feelings at all.
I will, I will offer an opinion in response since, since an opinion was sought. Or at least my, my understanding. And then I would very much appreciate staff's sort of clarification or correction or expansion on, on something like this. Many of the, the, the structures that we go through for the general plan, including this element, are designated either by the state or by precedent or by similarity, like element to element. So while I appreciate sort of the nuance of the question, which I've mentally paraphrased as, why don't we just stop at policies and not go into programs in a document like this? I, I, I'm comfortable leaving the programs in there because I know that it goes from programs to like, programs in the abstract, like things we would like to accomplish down into people, money, timelines, deadlines, like there are at least two or three levels of execution that happened beyond that. And I think for myself and for, potentially for the public, the policies, what really the policies aren't really getting at is clarified by the examples of the programs. So I think to me, that's, that's, that's how I'm comfortable leaving them in there. But that is an opinion based on, you know, work on elements to date, first round. But I defer to staff for more clarity on sort of the precedent and the, the logic behind having programs in elements.
Thank you, Chair Schindler, and also Commissioner Silverstein for your comments and questions. So just to offer maybe a recap of why we did this dual document approach. Coming out of the June 2023 study session, we had a list of over 130 programs that were rooted in extensive community feedback that essentially the community said, this is what we want to do. For example, Commissioner Sillon earlier pointed out, let's plant 75 trees. So in, while not wanting to remove all of those things, we wanted to really retain the valuable community feedback that we received. So that's why we split it into the EJ element, which has a wider aperture of something that has programs that are a little bit more broad, relatively more broad, and then something more specific with the implementation guide or the action guide that has a more focused aperture, something more specific. So in that way, we're not losing sight or track of any of this valuable community feedback. So in the future, when we're implementing, then we already have somewhere to start from that's rooted in a community desire. I know there's other colleagues on my project team that also would like to share. I'll turn it to Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, so I think that's a really, I, I'm, I understand the concern about not wanting to overpromise and I'm sensitive to that. But I think that the time horizon that this planning process covers, eight years, is really significant and that the resources to execute a lot of these programs could be found if the proper will was applied. And I think that the concern that I would have is, you know, you, like by setting out strong language, by putting this down in stone, you are making promises to the community and there is a possibility that you won't be able to fulfill those promises. But is it better to promise nothing at all and have things continue exactly as they are now? Or find opportunities to execute, to own, own both the wins and the losses? And one thing that I would also point out is that the California Attorney General has issued guidance and around best practices pertaining to SB 1000 implementation and recommends specifically in their strong guidance in the language and specificity wherever possible. And that is precisely because it's very easy, or not very easy, but it's easier to agree when you operate at a very high level of abstraction. It's, you can get consensus on broad themes and policies. It's when you start actually getting to that next level that it really starts to matter, that you see the breakwaters emerge and that's where the most valuable insight can be obtained. And that's also the place in the specificity where the community's expertise and lived experience really shines through, right? They can tell you what streets they see cars speeding on. They can tell you which ones they feel safe biking on, which ones they don't. They can tell you which houses they've seen dilapidated, yet people are living in. That is the type of content that we've been gathering throughout, throughout this process. And I think what staff has said is that they've taken, you know, you know, no, no small amount of work to make sure that that input hasn't been lost. And so that, because that is, represents the return on the city's investment in the outreach and the engagement process throughout.
Yeah, if, if I can clarify my prior statement, I in no way would ever want to get rid of all of those specific programs and at both the level of the implementation guide as well as kind of the, the former kind of as well as kind of the former kind of element layer, it was just thinking about extracting those two separately and parallel, to say, "These are our policies, this is our guiding vision, this is our mission, where we're going." And then separately, with all of the community feedback and everything, "By the way, this is how we plan on doing it", but not necessarily have those being, I mean, at least in my head, the way I've managed things, those are two entirely separate things. And then back to what we've been talking about in terms of funding, and how do we actually get this done? I do think that some more work needs to be thought, needs to kind of tease the very formal accountability when it comes to some of these goals. I don't have a ton of experience with, well, I don't have experience with the Environmental Justice Plan because it isn't in place, but I do have experience with the Transportation Master Plan, and that is something, again, that is in our city's constitution, and we say all the right things, and we are really good about writing down the things that we care about, and we get community feedback, and we write these, you know, beautiful theoretical plans. And then, when it comes to every individual decision, it comes to budgeting, it comes to staff resources, it comes to a community discussion, and things end up taking a very long time, and ultimately, it comes down to a political vote or conversation on a one-off basis. And these plans that we do write down hold no teeth within our political process, and they don't really hold a lot of teeth within our community, because there's a lot of precedent to say, "Yeah, we wrote something down." And, you know, I mean, our initial downtown-specific plan from a very long time ago talked about having a, you know, pedestrian plaza on Santa Cruz that no one even knows about today. And so I do think that specifically focusing on these programs and focusing on that execution part, how do we tease out what are we actually going to be able to do? And the funding is potentially there, and the political will is potentially there, but us passing these elements doesn't actually get us there. And so it's a reasonable conversation for us within the Planning Commission to say, "Yes, it's important, and yes, we all agree," and, you know, every single public comment we got today also agreed, and it wasn't controversial. And it won't be controversial until there's a question around, "Well, do we spend $100,000 on A versus B?", and all of a sudden, now this is deprioritized. And I haven't, you know, we talked about shall and will and should, and I haven't figured out what we, as a government body, as a general community, as staff or city council can do to actually say, "No, this time it matters," because so far, none of the times it's actually mattered, and it seems to just be this back-and-forth between, "Let's write down the right things," and then, when we actually go into budgeting and prioritization, we'll start anew, and everything is, in theory, on the same playing field.
Commissioner Sullen.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Doe, Chair Schindler, Commissioner Silverstein, for your comments. And yeah, I do want to also kind of talk about what you've been talking about with accountability. Yeah, just another way of wording the concern I think we're all sharing is, especially with the environmental justice element, you know, per state law, the purpose of it is to address, you know, specific communities within the city that are disadvantaged for historical reasons, many of those as a result of the city's policies. So if we go into these communities and get input, which my understanding is, has been done before in different shapes and forms, so we're doing again, we're saying, "Okay, like this time, there's a state law, and we're going to have this environmental justice element, this new thing," but what we're hearing back is, "Well, we're concerned nothing's going to get done." Yeah, there's definitely a big concern that the long list that we have now that's called the Implementation Plan might not be implemented. And, you know, when you hear "Implementation Plan," especially when it's at this like kind of granular level, and if we're talking about using words like "will" or "shall," but even "consider", you know, those are things that I think people will expect us to follow through on. So I think, and the other thing I would want to say is, you know, as someone that followed the housing element, the state did, you know, the legislature has been passing laws that enforce accountability. And so now, the programs, at least my understanding is, in the housing element that we committed to, have to have timelines, have to have more specific details, and we're expecting that, you know, at some point, someone's going to be asking about each and every one of those that we put in there. So we were pretty careful about what we committed to because of this state oversight that's been put in place from HCD and potential, you know, advocacy groups. So if we're talking about the environmental justice element, I don't think we should be comfortable saying, "Well, there's no similar oversight, so we could be a little more loosey-goosey with what we commit to," because, you know, it's a policy document, and potentially, if we don't deliver, that's okay. I do think we should be a little more concerned. That being said, you know, I do recognize what Chair Schindler said, which is, "We want to make sure the community feels heard, and we don't want to go and collect feedback and then, you know, produce and, you know, get us all this input and then produce an output that's like 10% of what was said and not mention what happened." So I think staff is doing a good job of showing this sort of production line. So we're just asking to sort of refine it, which is, we have the input, we have the wish list from the community, and that could be a list of all these different things. Then, we need to, at some point, and I'm suggesting this is done at the program level, and I think this was sort of already done in the previous version, and then it was sort of hybridized with the Implementation Plan. But I think even at the program level, we might need to be transparent in saying, "These are things that we are going to do, these are things that we may not do." And that's, I think, a lot easier to do, given with CRC's latest feedback with the prioritization exercise, where we know there's top three categories that the community really cares about, so we can focus on those, and even within those, talk about, "Okay, these are the programs we're going to commit to, timelines, et cetera." And that list is something that maybe we're not saying we're going to do for sure, but it is something that we're taking seriously, and staff is going to pursue. And when there's decisions about, you know, budgeting or staff allocation, we have pretty good confidence that these things will be brought up, especially things with different departments, because I'm seeing some things have to go to the police department, or Public Works, et cetera. So like others are saying, we need to make sure there's someone there kind of saying, "Hey, we made a pretty big commitment here to these things," so we do need to talk about them. And then, for the Implementation Plan, that's even further specified, you know, so of those programs that we're pretty bold on continuing, we come back and say, "Okay, of those, these are the ones where we're moving to implementation," which means like, we have pretty high confidence that we're going to do them, and perhaps we could set a threshold, like they're funded, and we have staff allocated, or we think we will, or something like that. And then we start talking about implementation. I think what we have right now is, you know, if we had staff and budget for everything, this is how each program would be implemented, but we're also saying that's probably not going to happen. So the Implementation Plan is not representative of what will be implemented, it's just sort of how we would implement things if we had all the resources, is kind of how I'm interpreting it. So yeah, I think to Commissioner Silverstein's point, we don't want to just stop at the policy level and leave it there. And he's also making the point that we don't want to take all the policies, blow them into programs, and blow those into implementations for every single one, and say, "We're going to do that." We're looking for sort of a middle ground where we are being transparent with the public, saying, "Here's the wish list, we heard everything you said and everything you want. Here are the things that the city is committing to heavily looking into, and of those things, here are the things that are moving into implementation phase." And then with these annual updates, we can hear about the programs that we think are important, and what the status update is. And then I would suggest, and I'm not sure if this is already in the list of programs, but with the public, perhaps it could be another annual, semi-annual, something like that, exercise where we show the public, "Okay, here's the wish list from last time, here are the things that have moved into programs, here are things that are being implemented," and the public has a chance, the community has a chance to perhaps reprioritize those things, provide comment on those things, and/or add new things. And so it's just kind of like constantly evolving. Perhaps, I understand, it might be bold to commit that every one or two years, the whole list will change at the city level as far as what we're doing, but at least there's some sort of continuous feedback loop. So that's how I suggest, we sort of try to straddle this line between showing what we're actually going to do, and making sure the public feels like they're being heard, and they're keeping the city accountable.
Thank you. I'd like to just pause and direct a question to staff. There were three questions posed in the staff report that we might consider and give feedback on. As I'm rereading them, I believe that all three of them have been addressed through the broad discussion, but I wanted to ask staff if you have gotten enough feedback on the three questions that were posed, which were, "Did the project team adequately respond to the feedback from the June 2023 study session?", "Are the staff recommendation columns in the matrix appropriate?" I'm paraphrasing here. And then, "Do the climate resilient communities' recommendations require further refinement?" So those were the starting point of consideration. Are there, do you have, is there more feedback from the commission on those three topics that we could provide?
Just briefly, before moving to that, just wanted to add a little bit of food for thought on this question about accountability and implementation. So as I understand it, I believe that, I don't know that it's statutorily required, but there is a level of detail beyond policy that you need to have in the General Plan. So in terms of like, where can you slice it off and not include it in the General Plan? The General Plan does have to say something about how it's going to achieve what you're saying at a policy level. And then beyond there, there's flexibility in terms of like how you say that and to what level of detail. And I think, you know, keeping in mind that the plan is a long-term plan, you want to structure it in a way that allows you to say what you're trying to achieve, but then actually make decisions about how you're going to achieve that over time, because the changes that happen, and the opportunities that you have, and the resources that you have, can't be entirely predicted over the entire timeline horizon of the plan's implementation. So there's some level of like flexibility that is helpful to have, to be able to make decisions over time. That said, I do think that for environmental justice specifically, given the objectives and what the community has said, that, you know, one of the things that all of the language in the General Plan does is it expresses the city's commitment to achieving some particular outcome. And so some level of, not just specificity, but like force of language around certain things is important for the environmental justice in particular, in order to address the historical harms and the concerns and the issues that have been raised through a significant amount of community outreach. So, you know, some level of more than, you know, where you want to be specific about, like, "We shall do this." Grammatically, it makes a difference of like what you're saying you shall do, like, "We shall achieve this outcome," or "We shall like take this approach in order to try to get there." So there are things that you can, that you can make a commitment to, like, "We shall prioritize this, we shall take this approach." That doesn't mean that you know that you're going to be successful in the implementation about that approach, but you're committing to like, to trying to achieve it in some particular way. And the last thing that I would say is, there, in a similar way of like a capital improvement plan, for example, there are things that you are using a capital improvement plan to do to implement the General Plan. And the General Plan doesn't necessarily say, like, "This is exactly how we're going to use a capital improvement plan in order to build the streets that are going to implement the transportation goals and policies that we've established." And you can try to articulate some of that more specifically in the EJ element, for example, or in an Implementation Plan, because there's specific concern about not achieving those things. But I would just highlight that some of the day-to-day practice aspects of, like, okay, annually, we make a budget, and we want to make sure that when we make our budget, that we're considering the priorities that we've articulated in our environmental justice element. And so thinking through as a municipality, the ways that we can ensure that we're going to use all of the thinking and outreach that we've put into our environmental justice element, that we're going to consider that as an input in our decision-making process, and what you need to do to establish those processes and practices across departments, and at, you know, elected official level, and at staff level, because it applies in a lot of different ways. And that doesn't necessarily fall on, "We've articulated it in the General Plan per se," because that's that ecosystem of high-level vision, policy, program, and then like the things that we do to implement it on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you. It's helpful additional color to some of the things that Commissioner Silverstein was saying. I do want to be sure, and I'll ask it as a broad statement, is there, are there any topics that staff was specifically seeking feedback on, for which you have not received adequate feedback?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Looking at my different colleagues, we're all nodding in gracious thanks for your time and your feedback this evening.
Thank you. I'm glad we have at least touched on each of the major concerns that were outlined in the staff report, and probably then some. Commissioner Sullen.
Thank you. Just a quick point of clarification, the gentleman that was just speaking, I did hear you say your name and your role, but could you mention what, could you mention it one more time? I missed it the first time.
Sorry. Eric Callaway, Managing Director at Change Lab Solutions.
And how is Change Lab Solutions involved with the environmental justice element?
Change Lab is a sub-con consultant to M Group, and our mission is healthy communities for all through equitable law and policy change. So we have expertise on health, like health, social determinants of health, and equity in policy and law generally, and then planning specifically.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. So yeah, thank you for what you just said about, you know, what needs to be in the plan. I guess, I think, again, going back to accountability, I think we could certainly, you know, in terms of using stronger language, I feel very comfortable using strong language about the policies. I mean, I know that CRC's exercise was more about ranking the policies, so I don't have a great sense of whether, you know, there's people that feel like, you know, there's another policy that's not even on the list, but it seems like generally, based on public comment, we feel good about the list of policies, and specifically, there have been three that have been identified by the community, so we should be very strong in saying, "We want to address those issues: housing, food, and pollution." With the programs, I do think that we could use strong language as long as we're willing to commit to those programs. So again, I would just suggest that we perhaps reduce the list of programs to ones that the city is very, very willing to pursue, even if we don't have specific details and know when, you know, or how it's going to be done. Perhaps, there could be another program added to the actual like implementation of this element, because some people here have commented, and I agree with that, that some other commissioners have commented that we need to have someone accountable for working with these other departments and making sure these things are prioritized. So perhaps, we could make a strong commitment that, "Okay, these are the programs we strongly care about, and we commit to..." meetings, like the police department, et cetera, making sure there's someone there to present those things. So that would be my feedback. And one quick comment, I just wanted to clarify, when I was talking about the safety element, I think I, I forget what the legal term is, but I confused two different things. There's the ACT-MANLO app, and there's the SMC Alert system. Both I think are important, and so in terms of making sure that people are using these things, I do think SMC Alert seems more important, because that's where you would, my understanding is you would get information about like how to evacuate from an emergency hazard, like an earthquake or flooding or whatever. ACT-MANLO is a little bit more about the public reporting issues to the city, but yeah, both are important. We should make sure that residents are fully aware of both and really be pushing implementation of both. So just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any more lights and having received confirmation from staff that at least we've touched on each of the major comments that they have, the major questions that they were seeking feedback on. I am going to go ahead and close this component of our agenda. We have then
Excuse me.
Closing the study session, moving on to informational items. Ms. Chow, are there any staff wished to provide any updates on upcoming meetings or any other informational items?
Thank you Chair Schindler. So just a, a kind of a quick sneak preview for upcoming meeting, which will be in a few weeks, so that will be on June 24th. The agenda has not been confirmed, we will be sending out the public hearing notice at the end of this week, but we can anticipate potentially a single-family home, the reconstruction of the service station on Willow Road, so this is part of the offset improvements for the Willow Village Plan. And then looking at another, a general plan topic, this is associated with modifications to the level of service policy in our traffic impact analyses, so.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Sure, it would be a, a review of our LOS, so Level of Service Policy, in our TIA, so our Transportation Impact Analyses.
Thank you. Any other informational items? Thank you for the vigorous and detailed discussion this evening on this important topic. Thank you again to staff for the preparation, as well as for the, the engagement and the constructive comments tonight. I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 10:37. Thank you.